And then a calendar for Sneed.
Okay, Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee, I'm Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by Council President Brandon Scott, to my immediate left Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District; Councilman Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee; to my right Vice President of the Council Sharon Green Middleton, from the 6th District, Member of the Committee; Councilwoman Shannon Sneed, from the 13th District, Member of the Committee; to my immediate right is Margery Curran, Staff to the Committee. We've also been joined by Kimberly Rubens, from Council President Brandon Scott's office. Representing Mayor Jack Young is Jeff Amoros. And we are also joined by Councilman Chris Burnett, from the 8th District. For this panel, Youth Services, we have a number of agencies. So we have Health, Family League, Wreckin' Parks, Mayor's Office of Human Services, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, Enoch Pratt Free Library, and Baltimore City Public School System. We're going to start out with Health Department. Whoever is testifying, if you could come up, please say your name, your position, title, and please introduce everyone from your department that you have with you. Then I'm going to ask each agency to... Margery, do we have these in a specific order?
So, we have all those agencies listed here. The services are specific to youth, so we'll probably just have to flip around to the health-specific ones first. They're all there, but this one happens to be library first, but there's no particular order.
Oh, it's just random?
Yes. So if you flip through forward, that's Family League, this is MOED, that's Wreckin' Parks, and that's Health.
So we have them in some order. So Mary Beth, I'm going to ask you to please sit down. We'll just start from whatever order they're in, it's fine.
Yes, it looks like the library was...
Library, okay. Do we have anyone here from Pratt? Heidi, how are you? Mary Beth, sorry about that. No offense. I hope none taken. So we're joined by Councilman Robert Stokes, from the 12th District; Councilman Z. Cohen, from the 1st District. So I'm going to ask each of the agencies to keep your presentation at under five minutes. If you have more than one slide, we can address if you need a little more time. And we'll go from there. Heidi, take it away.
All right. Good morning. Thank you Chairman Costello. Good morning, members of City Council. So glad to be here with you today. So I just want to highlight some important points for our budget besides what is on our slide. We do only have one slide. The FY 2020 proposed budget will allow the library to continue our level of service, including our expanded hours. It does require 137,143 reduction in requested funding for database subscription and print materials, which at an average cost of about $15 translates into about 9,000 fewer items purchased through city funding. We do have state funding increasing both in terms of the state library aid provided to the city and also for our role as the State Library Resource Center, due to increases in the state funding formula. Aid provided to the city for our expanded funding continues again this year, which has allowed for a 30% increase in hours, as well as an increase in usage. And as you'll see on our slide, we have had a significant increase in the circulation. So we have increased our circulation by more than 55% in the last two years. Total state support in the budget, including library aid, makes state funding our most significant source of funding, which exceeds the general funds by nearly a million dollars. The library also will reopen our Central Library this year, which we're very excited about. After a $115 million renovation, we expect a significant increase in visits and usage in FY 2020, which is reflected in our output statistics up there, as we expect over a million people to visit Central next year. On the capital side, the library recently closed the Hampden Branch, which is over 100 years old, for renovation, which will provide space for programs and new meeting room space. And we have funding for Clifton and Forest Park. Next year's budget provides fundings for eventual Wallbrook, as well as a new library in Park Heights, and close proximity to the C.C. Jackson Rec Center. So if you look at our slide, you will notice, again, the 55% increase in circulation, as well as the completion of the Central Library and expansion of the teen room there, which will have a state-of-the-art audio/video recording studio for teens, as well as a maker space for teens and a job and career center. Our visits to the library are increasing, and we expect that to continue in FY 20. And our other output of school readiness, participants, this year we had a target of 55,900. We may be slightly below that, so next year we have reduced that target because of just changes in the way we count the zero-to-five attendees at our programs. And now I'm open for any questions?
We're going to hold off until the end on questions.
Okay, great.
Heidi, if you could grab one of these seats.
Sure.
So every agency that tests... Oh, no, no, you guys are good. One of these three up here.
Okay.
We're going to ask each agency official that testifies to grab one of these seats, and then we'll take questions at the end.
All right.
I am going to take one liberty chair to ask each of you immediately following your testimony. You guys weren't impacted by the cybersecurity issue, were you?
We were not, no. We have separate...
Got it, thank you.
We have, however, provided space for city departments to do e-time and payroll. So we've helped.
Got it. Thank you very much. Bob, who do we have next?
So Family League?
Family League, Demond.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Mr. President, thank you, Demond Malard, President and CEO, for Family League of Baltimore. I'm pleased to have with me members of my team, Senior Director for Strategic Operations in Grant Compliance Jonathan Carter, as well as our Communications Manager Rachel Graham, and most of you know Matt Quinlan, our Public Policy Manager. Thank you for your past support for Family League and the role that you play as a value partner in improving outcomes for children and families. Since 1991, Family League has been the designated local management board for the city. And as a careful steward of the funds we receive, we leverage city dollars to maximize impact in support of the Mayoral Education Youth Engagement Pillar, as well as the state's H-Child Well-Being indicators. Within this approach, it's been evident by way of our investment in the community schools, as well as the out-of-school time strategy. Given the historical inequities that continue to manifest themselves in the present day for our youth, removing barriers and increasing access to opportunities for students has been our top priority. Within the community school strategy, the Mayor's City Council currently invests directly in 45 community schools, with Family League providing strategic guidance to a total of 50 schools in that strategy. In FY 18, thanks to your investment, with our partners, we've been able to leverage resources in support of community schools via five main channels. These resources provided both individual sites, as well as the community school network support, in the total of $31 million of leveraged assets. This synchronized approach does focus on barrier removal with lead agencies and their commitment to the whole child, which means addressing food insecurity, lifting up health and social supports, while prioritizing family engagement and youth development. The school leaders integrate academic achievement in alignment with the individual community schools' scholastic goals and intentionally collaborate with partners and service providers. The community school coordinators address what is needed from the lead agencies by families, students, and staff, and in turn, drive the connection to the resources and partners while serving as advocates on behalf of the students and parents. Community schools and out-of-school time is a clear blueprint for collective impact, and your steadfast support has not only been garnered as national attention, but also been viewed as a leader. We also want to express our deep appreciation for your support with returning the funds as it relates to expanded youth programming back to Family League. This past year, we distributed $1.6 million to serve 1,948 youth in expanded youth programming. You provided us with the opportunity to invest these programs that demonstrated the ability to improve outcomes for youth in key focus areas, such as violence reduction, housing stability, or an urgency to maintain or reconnect older youth to school or the workforce. These have all been steeped and rooted in financial literacy, health and hygiene, healthy relationships, and self-awareness and conflict resolution. The Expanded Youth Program Request for Applications Appeal received approximately $5.7 million in requests to serve 21,469 youth. A 35-member community review panel determined our funding recommendations. The panel comprised of reviewers, 72% residing in Baltimore City, 68% work or attend in the city of Baltimore, 50% self-identified as African-American or biracial, 26% were young adults ages 25 to 35, all whose efforts yielded a 30% representation for our FY 19 EYP grantees as first-time award recipients from Family League. With that collectively, Family's investments in community school and out-of-school time and expanded youth programming all align with our mission to serve as an architect of change while creating lasting and positive outcomes. We look forward to your continued support, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Demond. If you could just grab a seat up front. Who's next?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jason Perkins Cohen. I'm the Director of the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. I have with me today Mr. Ernest Dorsey, who's our Assistant Director over our youth programming, Patty Morphy, who runs our data division, and Mr. David Higgins, who's our Budget Director. Before I dive in, just a quick note. I know the council's aware, but for those who are behind me or watching on television, obviously, we serve young people and adults. Today, I'm just talking about young people. I'll be back to talk about adults on Wednesday. Also for MOED, for us, Youth Works serves young adults as young as 14, but our other programs serve young adults from 18 to 24. Okay, so we have five slides. I'll go through them very quickly here in your request. The first is a partnership with a school system. We run a school, actually, with a small amount of money for a little over 100 young adults. These young adults are typically overaged and undercredited, so it's a really important opportunity for them to go get their GED or high school diploma. And that is functioning for several years, again, in partnership with the school system. Next, this is the funding for our YO centers. We have two YO centers, our Youth Opportunity Centers, one on the east side and one on the west side. Those programs maintain services for 700 youth at a time, but over the course of the year, we'll serve more than 700, as some of the 700 will transition technically out of youth, meaning they might get a job or go back to school. Once you're in YO, you're always in YO, so you can come back. But in terms of maintaining our caseload, we stay at 700. Again, I don't have to tell you about how important it is for young adults who are referred to as opportunity youth. Typically, they are not in school or not working to have really critical services, and YO provides a framework for that. Next, we have Youth Works. Youth Works is a city's summer jobs program. Again, as I mentioned at the start, we serve young adults from 14 to 21. This is the second-largest program in the nation on a per capita basis. Young adults this summer will work, starting on July 1st. They'll work for five weeks, 25 hours a week. They're paid minimum wage, which this year is 10, 10 an hour, or I should say, at least minimum wage. Obviously, any employer in the private sector that wants to pay them more, we and they think that's terrific. We partner with groups like the Family League, and the Housing Department make sure that young adults have access to two meals a day, which is really critical. As you know, many of our young adults are fed through the school system, and when the summer hits, this is really, really, really important. And they also receive financial education. We'll have young adults working at 700 sites throughout the city this summer, and I sense we'll be talking about that further when we go back through the question and answers. Next, we have our, what's called our WEOA-funded youth. WEOA is a federal funding stream. It stands for Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. It has had different acronyms through the years, but we've received federal funds for youth programming for decades. In this funding stream, we actually contract out with a number of nonprofits through the city. Again, this is for young adults between the ages of 18 to 24. They provide occupational skills training, in which they have the opportunity to receive a credential that is valued by the employers. And of course, the end goal is to help them get a job. And again, this is a federal funding stream that goes from the feds to the state to us, and we can talk more about that.
Thank you. And Jason, was Moad impacted by the cybersecurity issue?
Not directly. We are not on the city's system.
Got it. And Demond, I forgot to ask you. Got it. Thank you. Who's next? Head Start.
Good morning. I'm going to need a step stool. I do have some information that I'm going to pass out, some recruitment flyers, but also...
Nice job with the city colors.
So, good morning. I'm Shannon Burrows Campbell. I'm the Executive Director of Baltimore City Head Start. And Teri Hickey, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Human Services, is here. Baltimore City Head Start serves primarily three-year-old children and their family throughout the city, in partnership with several other providers. This is the last year of a five-year non-competitive grant that we... or a competitive grant that we received. And as a result of our outcomes and our ability to achieve the federal regulations in a way that the feds had said that we don't need to recompete, we are one of two organizations that have received another five-year grant for the next five years to provide Head Start services. So, General Funds supports a mentor coaching initiative that we are required to provide, which directly benefits the children in the classroom. While we recruit and we want to serve as many three-year-olds as possible, our goal is to truly work with the families of the three-year-olds, engaging them in a family partnership process. About 95% of the families that we serve set goals and expect to achieve them by the end of the year that we serve them. Then we transition them to the pre-K program. We are excited because we've maintained full enrollment for the full year. We expect that we will continue to achieve full enrollment. There are tons of children out there to serve. We could serve many more. And we have been effective in serving three-year-olds by their child outcomes data.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's perfect. Wreckin' Parks?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, fellow council members. I have with me today Ken King, who's our Chief of Physical Service, and Jocelyn Smith, who's our Chief of Staff. First slide talks about our aquatics services. Of course, we know that we currently operate six park pools, 13 neighborhood pools, three indoor facilities, one splash pad. We were excited this year to be able to open all six park pools for the first time since 2014. We normally would have not opened neighborhood pools until school ended. Another important milestone is that the Landville Hartford Pool, which has been closed for over 10 years, will open this year due to your support, which will be extremely beneficial to the community there. Also, one of the biggest things our aquatic team has been talking about has been being competitive with lifeguard pay. We was able to increase that as well this year. So we should definitely see a growth there. Youth and adult sports, some of our highlights with youth and adult sports. One, of course, this is the 50th anniversary of the BNBO Basketball League. Also, this year, we expanded and brought back in-house our youth football program. We saw that 10 of our rec centers this year. We hope to grow that. Eventually, we'd like to get it where it's at every one of our rec centers. And also, we expanded our winter basketball league, which has been, in the past, has been only in a couple neighborhoods. We've now brought that back on the youth and adult sports with the intentions of growing that program, also to have sports at all of the facilities. Last slide is our community rec centers. As you all know, we currently operate 43 rec centers. We have Cahill, which is under renovation, the new Cahill Rec Center is under renovation. We plan to open up the... which we'll open in fall of 2021. Also, this fall, we're planning to break ground on the Middle Branch Fitness and Wellness Facility at Cherry Hill. We are in the process of working with the community to renovate the existing Harlem Park Rec Center, with the goal to hopefully have that one open by the end of the summer. We're also looking at the possibility of, we're going through the final stages to renovate Towanda Rec Center. Some of the key highlights there, we currently operate VRI at eight of our rec centers. In addition, we're looking at and exploring the options of Saturday operations to see where there's a need for additional Saturday operations and what centers should be open, so we can make a good sound judgment on that.
Thank you, Director. Health, next?
Good morning. My name is Mary Beth Haller, and I'm here for the Baltimore City Health Department. I am the Deputy Commissioner for Youth Wellness and Community Health. I'd like to take a moment to introduce my team, starting actually from your left. We have Leslie Thompson, our Director of Finance, Francine Childs, our Assistant Commissioner for School Health. We have Greg Cilio, our Assistant Commissioner, representing here today the Office of Youth Trauma Services, and Assistant Commissioner Rebecca Deneen for Maternal and Child Health. Starting with maternal and child health, the Health Department is the leader of the BHB Initiative. That's the Be More Healthy Babies Initiative, and all of our activities are associated with this umbrella initiative. The service operates to promote positive health outcomes, including a home nurse visiting program, services to infants and toddlers who have been identified as having a developmental delay, and other programs to improve the health of children, enhance readiness in kindergarten, and promote positive youth development through immunization and year-round after-school programs. Some major budget items are that the recommended budget includes, and I want to make a slight correction here, it's not a new grant. We've actually had it for three years, but it's a very important grant. The name of the grant was changed, so it appeared to be new. It's a Sexual Risk Avoidance Education Grant, and grantees use the evidence-based approach and other effective strategies to educate youth on how to avoid risks that could lead to non-marital sexual activity. The recommended budget also includes funding for the You Choose program. This is a program to educate youth and prevent teen pregnancy. It eliminates the city's contribution to the Supplemented Administrative Care Coordination Program, but this reduction will not have an impact on services, as we've had carry-forward funding available to cover the match. That's a joint effort with the state and the Bureau of Maternal and Child Health. The recommended budget does not include funding for early Head Start program, as that program is no longer with the department. The grant is still being received by the City of Baltimore. It's just not seated in the Health Department, so it doesn't represent a loss to our city's children. The recommended budget adjusts turnover savings to align with the agency's budget, and includes several new federal positions that are supported with additional funding, federal funding. Those were actually created this year, but they'll appear in the budget book for the first time this... for '20. I'd like to turn now to School Health Services. The service provides delivery and coordination of health services in school health suites to more than 84,000 students and children enrolled in Baltimore City schools. The priorities include early nursing intervention in elementary school, skilled nursing management for children with special health needs, and mandated screening for hearing and vision impairments, mandated immunizations, health case management and coordination, and other services. The major budget items are that the budget provides 12.4 million to Baltimore City schools and bridge funding, while the city awaits a new education funding formula. Funding for 2020 is the final year of the city's commitment. The additional general fund position funds an office-support staff member. The increase in special funds is due to an increase in contractual services and materials and supplies. The final key area in the Health Department that touches on youth is Service 316 Youth and Trauma Services. The department created Youth and Trauma Services as a response to violence after the move of Safe Streets. It's focused on breaking the cycle of violence by supporting young people who have been impacted by trauma. The service conducts citywide trauma trainings and violence prevention programs in city schools. The service received a new grant called the Family Resilience Project. The Health Department serves as a sub-grantee for the University of Baltimore and will provide services to youth ages 12 to 17 that have been impacted by the opioid epidemic. It removes the federal funding for Safe Streets due to the move. That is now supported by general and state funds and is managed by the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice. It funds a grant service specialist position to execute the service's new focus, which is on trauma-informed care. The decrease in federal funding is due to an off-cycle federal grant called Supporting Male Survivors of Violence. Supporting male survivors of violence involves capacity-building efforts to increase and sustain values-based, trauma-informed, multidisciplinary community network to support boys and men and their families who have been impacted by violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. And if you could grab one of the remaining seats. And, okay, that's everyone on the panel. I want to take a moment to recognize... City Schools. Sorry about that. And I want to take a moment to recognize our mayoral fellows in the back. Fellowship Program, this is your first day. Welcome. We hope you're having a good time, and we'll be here for another 51 hours this week, if you want to pop back in and check on us. City Schools.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Costello. My name's Laura Jones. I'm the Manager for the Office of Teaching and Learning from City Schools. And also joining me today is Melissa Broome, our Director of Legislative Affairs. Out-of-school time is an integral part of the city school's blueprint for success, specifically, out-of-school time activities inspire and engage our students, allowing them to explore areas of interest and build essential academic skills in a safe and supportive environment. Schools offer a variety of out-of-school time activities during the school year. At each school, these activities can look a little bit different. There's before and after-school academic support, vendor or community partner-provided programming, enrichment opportunities, weekend academic and enrichment activities, and a variety of student clubs. In summer 2019, we are spending approximately 10.4 million to provide summer learning programming that takes a variety of forms for various grade levels across the city. This includes programming that specifically provides intervention, enrichment, acceleration, grade promotion, and credit recovery opportunities for our students. And this is an increased investment from last summer. The community school strategy is another important way that we provide opportunities for students and families outside of the traditional school day. We have 50 schools currently implementing our community school strategy. Of those 50 schools, 46 have robust outside-of-school time programming for the students at that school. Community schools provide a variety of supports, including enhancing academics through additional partnerships and training opportunities, expanding access to health and mental health services, and stabilizing families through emergency support and ongoing counseling in the home and the community. And the final way that we provide outside-of-school time opportunities is through our interscholastic athletic programming. We provide a variety of fall, winter, and spring sports opportunities for our middle and high school students, taking about a $3.6 million investment from the district office.
Thank you very much. If you could just grab one of the seats up here. So colleagues, what we're going to do is, I'm going to ask that we limit our questions to two questions apiece. Right now, it is 10:28. This session is scheduled to end at 1:00 p.m. Then we have lunch from 1:00 to 1:30. So if you have additional questions, I'm certain that we'll make time to circle back, but I want to make sure we give everyone a chance to ask their questions. The reason that I asked all of the reps from each agency to sit up here is there's no specific order of agency, so just because library went first, you don't have to go with library. Feel free to go with whoever you want. And with that, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll start... I'll start with Recreation and Parks, Mr. Director. So let me first start, by Mr. Director, by saying thank you for the great job that you and your team do throughout the city, especially recently with the pool opening. Thank you for getting that done in a very timely and efficient fashion. I had a great time swimming with the kids that day. It was kind of hard to get me out of the pool. But I want to also start by saying that I want to talk about Service 648, and to say just very bluntly that increasing your ability and your funding for this service is my top priority in this year's budget. So with that being said, you mentioned briefly in your remarks about these rec centers being open on Saturday. Can you talk to us about what will be needed to have every single... Can you talk to us about what would be needed to have every single rec center open on Saturdays in Baltimore? Because that is a top priority for myself, and I know many of my colleagues.
The projected amount will be roughly $3 million to open all the facilities, but one of the things we want to do is we want to make sure that if we're going to open a facility on Saturday, that there's a high demand in the areas, and also determine, do we open just our four rec centers, or do we open satellite sites as well? So we're fine-tuning some exploratory to get an idea from our team which of those centers have the higher demand for Saturday operations. But if you wanted to open every single one of the 43 rec centers, you're looking at approximately $3 million.
Thank you. Yes, we want every center open everywhere for everybody. Thank you for that information. That is the number-one priority for me. Another question for you, this is around aquatics. For the last few years of fiscal '15, there was a citizen survey that was administered. Did your department receive more detailed feedback besides citizen satisfaction of city-run pools? According to the most recent survey data, only 31% of citizens were satisfied or very satisfied. What if you received more? Was that more detailed feedback? And how was your department proactively targeted? Has your department proactively targeted resident concerns as it relates to maintaining city pools? But also, and probably more importantly, what do you need as far as resources to make that possible, to have city pools be more welcoming, be more accepting, and be more up-to-stands of city residents that are using them?
That's definitely something that we, we're constantly looking at how we can be more efficient in our operations. One of the things that we identified early on is that every year, but believe it or not, it's just not a Baltimore problem, it's a problem across the country. I was looking at the news last night on 45, and they was talking about the demand for lifeguards across the country, because people are looking at, younger people are now looking at other jobs. But one of the things we felt that could make us more competitive was getting closer to our, what other people or agencies was paying their lifeguards in the region, and we was able to pull that off this year. Another thing that we've been looking at is our pool operations. Our pools, if you all recall, we, the current administration asked the state for support over the next four years, roughly $6 million, a million and a half a year over four years to upgrade our existing neighborhood pools. All of our pools outside of Landville-Harford that we're coming online, they're still operating with the original systems, which means that things change over time, the turnaround time or the turnover time of water is much slower because we have the more slower systems. Resurfacing our pools also as we renovate facilities is looking at what are some more unique, simple amenities that we can put to our neighborhood pools to make them more attractive. So I think one of the top priorities as we continue to listen to our citizens is how can we come up with the capital that's needed to improve our overall pool operations.
And thank you. And, Mr. Director, sorry, Mr. Chair, just a follow-up on that. So have you spoken with BBBMR about changing some of the questions around pool usage to see, are there suggestions that you have that will better reflect, be able to better reflect what your department needs to do versus just asking their basic satisfaction?
Well, we're looking at all of our survey tools right now and assessing. One of the things that we recently went through was a reorganization, and we looked at our program, and we now have a programming division. We also have now a community engagement division so that we can be more responsive and we can be more engaged in the community. So we are assessing our current survey questions and making sure that we're asking the right questions so that we can get the, you know, the right information from our citizens.
And thank you. Thank you, Mr. Director, for all your work, and also thank you for improving my childhood rec center in Toowoomba. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's start with, so library was not impacted, Family League was not impacted, I can only assume Head Start was not impacted. Director Moore, you guys can just sit there, you don't have to get up. Those mics are on, right. Just be sure to use the mics. Director Moore, the cybersecurity issue that first hit on May 7th, when is the first time that you heard from the CIO Frank Johnson after that happened?
We, there was a...
Please use the mic, because these are televised.
There was a call meeting at City Hall the following day with all the agency heads, and that's why we was giving the update of what was the status and what was going on.
Okay, and have you been receiving consistent communication from Mr. Johnson?
Our office has been working with our Office of Emergency Management. There's a call every day at 10 and 1 o'clock, and we have our Chief of Staff that sits on that call as well as our Chief of IT, which is Justin King. So they're briefed every day in those briefings.
And did you have an email outage over the past two days?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Did you have an email outage over the past two days, like we did on the council? Like, was your email service not functioning?
Yeah, all right, we're currently working with a workaround through Google, but our current email service is not working.
Okay, and did the CIO communicate with you about that outage?
Not me personally, but like I said, it was something we was briefed in the agency head meeting.
Thank you. And MoED has not been impacted, and City Schools has not been impacted. Mary Beth, same questions for you with respect to Health Department.
I can tell you that for the Health Department, Mike Creed, our Chief Information Officer, has been working very closely with BSIT in the room since the beginning of the attack. I don't have the specifics about how the communication went in terms of, we mainly communicated back through Mike, but he was there in the room, so he had a lot of communication with the head of IT.
Okay, thank you. My other question is actually for Health as well. Mary Beth, can you talk about, just going to Youth and Trauma Services, can you talk about what evidence-based programs are provided to youth who've experienced trauma?
Yes, I'm actually going to ask Greg Cilio to speak because he can give more detailed information.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, Mr. Vice Chair, members of council, thanks for having me. Greg Cilio, Assistant Commissioner for Chronic Disease Prevention. I am responsible for the Office of Youth and Trauma Services. So we have a number of different programs. A lot of them are DOJ-funded, and all of our DOJ funding does require that the interventions that we are implementing are evidence-based. So we have our Supporting Male Survivors of Violence Grant in particular, which is a DOJ-funded activity that is based out of the Madison East End community in East Baltimore, so it's very geographically targeted. We mentioned earlier the Family Resiliency Project, which is being launched right now that is specifically geared toward young people and who have been impacted by the opioid epidemic. We have the Youth Services Advocacy Project, which is a program specifically about supporting victims of violence, but it's more about support services. We do have some mental health referrals that happen there, but we actually also prefer, we also refer people to housing opportunities. So it's housing stabilization, getting people connected to job opportunities, and then all different types of alternative therapies. So we use art therapy, music therapy, there's a number of different interventions that we've implemented. But all of them are evidence-based practices, and they are all ultimately connected to a broader, through BHSP, Behavioral Health System Baltimore, we work to connect them with a broader range of mental health services, much of which is ultimately supported by Medicaid. So we try to utilize Medicaid dollars whenever we have a Medicaid-eligible young person. So a number of different things happening. Our trauma training program, which we actually are working toward getting as many of the city agencies trained up as possible, and then we have a number of different partners. We've worked with some of the quasi-governmental agencies and nonprofits. That is based on the SAMSA model for trauma training. SAMSA came in, they delivered that model here, and then we took it over, and we have two employees that do that full-time. We also work in schools, train young people directly, so that's based on a very evidence-based curriculum that we do follow up and technical assistance with the organizations we work with.
Thanks a lot, Greg. And last thing, is Terry Hickey still here? Terry, if you could come up for a second, just the same question I asked Mary Beth in Rec and Parks. Not that we would be communicating directly with Head Start, but the Mayor's Office of Human Services, did you get direct communication from Frank Johnson after this incident occurred on May 7th?
We had direct communication from BSIT in the beginning, and we started those MoED calls with Emergency Management almost right away, and BSIT was a presence on those calls. So we got most of our information in a group setting through those calls that were set up the day after the event.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree wholeheartedly with President Scott that our chief priority is making certain that all of the rec centers are open for all of our youth throughout the week. And so if that is our number-one priority, then 1A has to be the quality of programming and facilities that we're providing for our youth. And so I have a question for Director Moore, and kind of specific to a specific geographic area. Thinking of the area west of Pennsylvania Avenue, east of Monroe, between North Avenue and Edmondson, one of the most challenged, most disinvested areas, not just in Baltimore but in the nation, can you talk to me about what types of recreational resources are we providing for the youth in that immediate area and the quality of that recreation?
I would assume you're more so focused on the area that services, Lydian Jones Rec Center.
No, I'm talking about all the way down to Edmondson, which I guess would include Harlem Park as well.
One of the areas that we've been looking at as an agency is where's those rec deserts, where there's no recreational opportunities. Harlem Park community is one of those areas, and like I said, we've partnered with the community as well as University of Maryland Medical Center in a volunteer project to renovate the existing Harlem Park Rec Center. What we're doing, we have a great opportunity now, we have a new Chief of Programming, as I stated earlier, and one of the things she's doing, she's assessing all of our programs to see, you know, what programs are needed in the community. Also, she's working closely with our center directors. Some of the programs that are offered in those areas is, of course, we do have our summer program that's offered every summer. We have out-of-school time program. Lydian Jones in particular, that's in that area, we have, is one of our Violence Reduction Initiative sites, so they offer extended hours on Friday and Saturday nights. Also, we have, in conjunction with Robert C. Marshall, Lydian Jones, as well as four other rec centers, Caroloff Cook to name another one. We have a baseball league that's played there at Robert C. Marshall that's free to the kids that we fund every year. We have BNBL, so there's quite a bit of offering there, but we're always looking and trying to find more ways and more innovative programs that we can offer to youth in that area as well as throughout the whole city.
Right. And so I had a conversation with someone in the administration about the importance of West Baltimore. And while as a councilperson, quite naturally, we advocate for our own districts, I don't think I would have to advocate on this council the importance of West Baltimore, specifically Sandtown, Winchester, Harlem Park, that entire 21217 zip code. When I look at this budget, when I think about the capital budget, it is disingenuous for our city to continue to say that West Baltimore is important, because if it is important, then we start, it'll start being reflected in the budget. And we cannot, and it's a shame to even mention that that rec center is in a VRI zone. So not only we saying that it's a disinvested community, but we're saying that it's one of the most violent communities. And still the budget doesn't reflect a significant investment in recreation and parks, which we know is one of those investments that is not law enforcement-driven, related to driving down violence and increasing public safety. This is critical, and if we continue to do this, then our budget is going to continue to be lopsided, where we're making more investments in the police department, and I know that you're challenged. I know that this budget does not reflect enough investment in Rec and Parks. I get it. I hope that you're not just, I hope that you're making the ask to the administration about the level of investment that we need to have in your, in your agency specifically to really address crime in our city, to really address trauma in our city, to really invest in our youth in the way that it needs to, and this budget does not say that.
Before I go on to the next one, Director, what's the status of the regrading of the multipurpose field at Robert C. Marshall Rec Center?
We have a task now, we have a civil engineer that is assessing the, because when we regrade that, we have to be able to secure that hill, and also the request is to make it a regulated field, which means now we're going beyond the existing footprint. So we have a civil engineer that's developing the plan for the regrading. That was something that was allocated in the existing budget. It's for us to do the planning process in the current budget with the intention, in the upcoming capital budget, to start construction of that, the new field at Robert C. Marshall.
Okay. If we can chat after the hearing about that for a minute, just needed a little more information, but thank you. Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you. So I have, it's for all of the folks that presented, I'm just wondering, of all the positions you have there for, to work with these youth, have all the positions been filled? Are there any vacancies? Is there anything outstanding, is the question? So the first question is, are there any vacancies within these units, positions-wise?
Recreation, we are excited about where we are in our positions with our vacancies right now. We are, we only have one center director that's vacant, that's Morale Park. We're moving to fill that, and we have four rec leader twos, and they had interviews on Friday to fill those positions. The other area that serves youth, but it's only temporary, is our summer activity leaders, rec leaders for, that runs our summer camps. We had another open house this weekend. There was roughly 70, I think over 70 people showed up. We offered 67 conditional offers. So we're really excited about where we are with the number of vacancies for our summer camps. Normally, we go in roughly about 100 down. We're sitting right now at roughly 110. That, we just offered 67, we have another open house, so we're in a pretty good position this year that we're going to be able to get to the 300 positions. And also, we're working with Jason's office at MoED, because there's always an excess of staff that they can't house, so what we've done is collaborated with them and identified some 18 to 21-year-olds that we also invited. So that was a great idea that was suggested to us, that we work together.
From MoED, all of our permanent positions are filled. We do have some vacancies that come up on the summer staff that are temporary, seasonal only, and they sort of refill them, but there are periodic openings.
Can we keep going?
Share a mic with me, thank you. Thank you. So for the library, we have, thanks to the $3 million in expanded hours funding completed our first year with full hours, we have over 600 positions, and we do have constant turnover in those. We have a number of positions that we filled this year focused specifically on youth. We're filling positions at our central library for our teen area, which has the, all of the technology and equipment, and our neighborhood branches see regular turnover. We're not always able, just to be honest, to be completely competitive with surrounding areas in terms of professional children and youth library and pay, but we're filling the positions as quickly as we can, and we've added a Chief of Programming and Outreach as well as someone focused specifically on teen services, and we're hiring for a position focused on early literacy at the moment.
While Family League doesn't provide direct service, we have currently filled all of our positions in our program service areas, and we also post a number of positions as it relates to our respective grantees on our website. So we would be happy to provide that information to you.
So as of July, we will have one position open, an Assistant Coordinator for Education Disabilities and Mental Health, but we are always recruiting for teachers and assistant teachers. Head Start requires an AA degree in early childhood education, and we see that at times our teachers will go back and they'll get their bachelor's degree and they'll move on to the school system, and then we're left with vacancies. So we're always recruiting. If you know folks that are interested, we will hire.
For the Health Department, our Maternal and Child Health Program has a nurse vacancy, but we're on track for filling that position. Bureau of School Health actually has some nursing and some recently vacated admin positions, and Youth Trauma Services has a small number of vacancies, and we're in the process of looking to fill those. looking to fill those positions.
City Schools District Office positions related to out-of-school time are filled. In cases where we have new positions coming on in FY '20, we're actively working to fill those now. I can't speak to school-based vacancies, but in any place where a school is currently carrying a vacancy, the school leader and the Human Capital Department are actively working to fill that position for next school year.
Thank you. Can we go back to the health with youth and trauma? How long has that vacancy been open now?
For Youth Trauma Services, some are part of grants that we're receiving. I believe it's about two positions. And the, one is for the recast grants. The individual holding that position found a different job opportunity, really a promotion, so it was really good for him. So we're now looking to fill that position. That's a position we fill, though, in coordination with the community.
Okay.
In terms of the selection of that person, it's very, very important.
Okay. So all the, you guys have the funding. No problem with the funding? You can definitely, it's there? These are not positions that are just open and just going to be open?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Cohen, followed by Stokes, Middleton, Schleifer, and Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to our agency heads. We know that in this city, we continue to have a crisis of violence facing our kids. Just recently, Laura, at City Schools, we did the Moment of Remembrance for the now 12 young people that have been murdered this year. That in and of itself is an unacceptably high number, but it belies the larger issue of trauma, violence, all the other adverse childhood experiences, housing instability, joblessness, lack of recreation that our kids are facing. So to pick up on where a few of my colleagues left off, I'm interested in what we, as various agencies, not just the Health Department, are doing to prevent trauma, to have our staffs be trauma-informed and trauma-responsive. Because, again, when we look at this budget and see the investment in police and not the investment in preventing those actions which would then require police, we know that we need to do more on the front end. So question for all the agencies is, what are you doing to make sure your staff is trauma-informed and trauma-responsive?
From Recreation and Parks, we are currently training our rec leaders, our center directors, and I think you're familiar, you sat in on one of the recent trainings. We're also working closely with your office to determine what robust program we can do, looking at some other models across the country and seeing what they're offering as well. But we're initially, we're training our center directors, our rec leaders currently. And then we're going to look and see what additional programming we can offer going forward, as well as assessing our staff as a whole.
And Director Moore, I appreciate that partnership. But just for the record, that training that I sat in on, while great, was a once-a-year, two-hour training. Am I correct?
From my understanding, I'll have to confirm that, but I thought there was a follow-up, but I can definitely confirm that. And then, but there's continued conversation. And then I think there was a discussion by our team recently about the possibility of bringing back a trauma-informed committee that can start, that can look and advise us what additional trainings are needed as well.
Appreciate it. Again, appreciate the partnership. And just to state, we know that best practice is for training to be ongoing, for there to be coaching, you know, once a year or even a couple of times a year, to me seems deeply inadequate, given the population that you specifically are serving. Thank you.
For MOED, I met with the new Health Commissioner last month, maybe two weeks ago, about different ways that we could partner. And one of the things we talked about was trauma-informed care for our team. Our team has received trauma-informed care in the past, but to your recent point, more is needed. And I actually have a meeting scheduled with Greg, I believe, later this month, to talk about what kind of training could be offered to the MOED team.
Nice.
So the Pratt Library is lucky to be part of a national network, as well as a local statewide network of public libraries who receive a lot of resources towards training with more vulnerable populations. We recognize that every single day, we're working with customers who come in that are suffering from everything, from opioid addiction to youth who experience violence on a daily basis. So our staff receives regular training on all of those topics. Oftentimes, it is library-specific, so working in our specific setting with our specific customer base and providing resources. We do also have a partnership with the University of Maryland with our social workers. So seven of our branches have social workers placed in them to work with our customers as well as our staff. So they have everything from healing circles that they do, work with parent groups, formerly incarcerated groups, with youth who have experienced different forms of violence. So they're there, working both with our staff and with our customer base. And we have a social worker on staff as well. And of course, we look forward to looking at specific trauma-informed training in specific, which we haven't done locally yet, but we're, I'm meeting with you, and we look forward to seeing what resources are available.
Thank you. And just for that partnership with the University of Maryland, just be a little more specific. So it's with the School of Social Work, right? The SWACO program?
Yeah, it's with the SWACO program.
Could you just lay out a little bit more, like, the amount of hours? Are they moving between libraries? Are they assigned to a geographic cluster of libraries? How does that look in practice?
They're actually, in practice, so it's actually funded through a national grant, through the Institute of Museum and Library Services. And it is, as well as private funding that both institutions receive to support the program. And they're placed specifically in seven branches, with both University of Maryland and the library providing a social worker who floats between branches as needed. So for example, if someone goes into a branch and needs social work services and there isn't a social worker there, they will set up an appointment and refer them to the social worker, or a social worker will come out to meet with them at the branch. And for the university, the students are doing a field placement and helping to train the staff and work with the customers. And then the professional social workers are working both with the students, with customers, and with the staff.
Thank you, Mia.
Last year, we partnered very closely with the Department of Social Services as a part of a project called Early Interventions. And it was really focused in terms of adverse childhood experiences. We drilled down specifically in the 2121 zip code, which really looked at 40% of the CPS calls was coming from that zip code, in which we partnered with the community schools as well as the school staff in terms of providing that level of trauma training to them. We recognize that it's obviously an enormous need and something that we can grow on in terms of our internal professional development.
Damon, I'm curious if you're thinking at all about all of the out-of-school time folks and whether they're receiving training? Can that be part of the commitment when you get Family League dollars? Because we know that a lot of these dollars are city dollars, that there be a component where you must be trauma-informed and responsive.
We definitely can partner and work with our agency and grantees in that area. We provide a level of professional development and technical assistance with all of the out-of-school time providers that gather each month. And I think that is definitely an area that we can continue to focus on.
Thank you.
So in Head Start, trauma-informed care is a multifaceted approach, and it's embedded in everything we do. All the staff are trained in the social and emotional foundations of early learning, which is the way to work with young children that have experienced trauma or could be experiencing trauma. In addition, we have mental health consultants in every classroom and able to work individually and in groups with all the Head Start children, as well as their families. In addition, there's our staff, because oftentimes, our staff are experiencing trauma in the moment and in the days. And they need the support and assistance in order to do their best when they come to work, so those supports are available to them. We have the mentor coaching model that goes back and helps to coach around the trauma and around the social and emotional foundations of early learning, so that it's to fidelity and that they're evaluating the children and their outcomes based on how they're progressing around those types of issues.
About families? I know you had mentioned earlier the family support, but we know that to have truly trauma-responsive approach, families must be part of the equation. Are they, how are you working with moms, dads, and families, siblings, so that they're also part of this work?
Yeah. So we offer a couple of different strategies. We have the mental health consultants that offer group work around trauma. We also have the individual work that families can access. But then we also have like a non, like, it's not as intensive, but our family partnership building. When we work with our families and we try to help them develop goals, we talk about those issues that could be impacting their family. And then we do referrals and we bring in extra support. And so we're targeting it from many different angles to try to get at it.
Okay. Thank you.
This is actually for the Health Department. Unfortunately, shootings have become too common. What strategies, I guess, I don't know if you answered, what strategy is the Health Department using to help young people in the community deal with negative effects of violence in their neighborhood? And I don't know the gentleman that spoke, but also, he mentioned to Councilman Costello about intervention programs. Can this body get a list of your intervention programs that he mentioned to Councilman Costello?
Sure. Again, Greg Scilio, Assistant Commissioner of the Health Department. I'm happy to provide a list, sort of an outline of each one of those programs. I mentioned a bunch of them earlier. But we do have a number of programs that work on stabilization of victims of violence. So that's everything from helping them stabilize their households. So we work with the families as well as the young people in everything from housing to employment. We get them connected to various mental health and different types of alternative therapies. And then we also have specific GOJ-funded models that are really more about sort of the mental health group therapies as well. But I can get you a list of each of those and what funds them, if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can get two questions or one?
Please.
I just have one more. It's for Head Start. Can you speak about full population of three-year-olds in Baltimore City that are not participating in Head Start, but should be? And what is the plan to meet that need?
Great question. So the full population of eligible three-year-olds is about 3,000. And when we say eligible for Head Start, you have to be at 100% of the federal poverty level and live in the city and be between the ages of three and five. The Head Start program, though, in the city, all of our programs target just three-year-olds. So there's a gap in the amount of seats that are available versus how many children would be eligible to be served. Head Start is totally based, the number of children that we can serve, on the amount of federal dollars we receive that's appropriated through Congress. And so the only way to get an increase in the number of seats is to get more federal funding in to increase the amount of slots that we're allowed to serve.
Thank you.
Councilman Stokes, could you restate that request for the, what was it, a list of intervention?
A list of violence intervention programs that you asked the gentleman. He said he had some programs, violence intervention programs. We just asked for the list that he said he was going to provide.
Okay.
That's just a request that I was asking for.
Please.
But just to clarify, so these are trauma programs that are designed to sort of break that cycle of trauma. So when we talk about violence intervention, that was really the Safe Streets model, which is now in the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice. But our programs are specific to trauma, working with victims of violence, and I can provide a list of what those are, certainly.
So it'll be a list of trauma programs, not?
Correct. Trauma. Violence intervention is really sort of that Safe Streets model. There's the hospital responders' model that is all out of MOCJ now. That was in the Health Department, but it moved out.
Okay. So Jeff, request number three is from Councilman Stokes, and that's going to be a list of trauma programs out of the Health Department.
Confirmed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Middleton?
Thank you. First, I just want to thank all of you for the continued work that you are trying your best to accomplish and helping and working with our youth in this city. But as you know, we are still experiencing a lot of pain. You're helping with trauma. There's just a wide range of programs. But there's a saying that I continue to think about as I advocate for jobs. And the one saying is, nothing can stop a gun but a job. So just think about that. Nothing can stop a gun but a job. And we, I still feel that we need to reach deep into our high schools and get these youth before they graduate from high, they need to learn some skills while they are there. Programs for trauma, programs for families are all good, but we have to have something, we have to have some deep training programs in the school. And we can't just rely on the Baltimore City Public School System alone. This is a time where we all have to work together at this. If you have, and again, you know, every year I bring up apprenticeship because it is one of those training models that actually is on-the-job training model, and they go, they graduate and they're in that field. Can any of you say a program that you presently have in a high school that is actually teaching and training a person for a career, for a government job, for, you know, a big business that we have, for a hospital? We have school, we have shortage, some of you were mentioning some openings that you have. Have you connected with a high school and actually introduced those programs there? We need to really think outside of the box and step further. I'd like anyone or all of you to respond on how you are actually reaching our 14, 15, 16-year-olds. I mean, we could go to middle school. And I guess, go ahead, anyone could start with that.
Good morning. Jason Perkins calling again, Mayor's Office of Employment Development. So we work very closely with the school system on a number of activities. We have a program with them called Grads to Careers, which is also a partnership between the city school system, ourselves, and Baltimore's Promise, which is a nonprofit organization. And that is targeting young people in their senior year of high school to make them aware of their opportunities if they're not planning to go to college. And we are offering about 200 young people free training at one of, I believe, seven different occupational tracks in healthcare, construction, IT. And so the city school system has staff people that recruit directly while young people are in school. We have staff people who are making the connection to the training programs and employers to make sure that there's a seamless pathway. I mean, that is, that's one program that we're doing. But we're, in general, partnering in a much deeper way with the school system around their CTE programs.
So at the Pratt Library, we have a program outside of the City Works program that we call Community Youth Corps, which is students in high school who we also hire, but we're also mentoring them along the way. We have a program, person who's dedicated, his name is Coach Jones, he's dedicated to sort of mentoring them. And we also hope that they'll see libraries as a career that isn't just about books, but is about all the things that we're about, technology, community outreach, interactions. And then we also plan, when Central is complete, to use the audio/video recording studio and all of the technology lab to do STEM and tech training that will be job and career-focused as well.
Family League has partnered with Mayor's Office of Employment Development and Youth Works for the last three years, I believe, as a part of the Summer Skill Builders Program, which is specifically focused on 14- to 15-year-olds, and providing kind of life skill support and really looking at, in terms of building kind of the key fundamental milestones as it relates to workforce development in the future. For the last year, I think we had about 300 youth participate, and it was using an evidence-based curriculum through the International Youth Foundation called Passport to Success. And in terms of the surveys that we received from the young people, felt that And in terms of the surveys that we received from the young people, felt that it was very engaging and really appealed to their liking.
Recreation and Parks, we have also in partnership with M O E D is our Conservation Job Corps Program. It's where we give young men and young women the opportunity to come out and learn more about nature and environment, but also about the daily maintenance operations of our park maintenance. And that's, that division is particularly of interest to our agency because we have an aging workforce there, and we want to make sure that we're prepared and have some individuals in the pipeline that's interested in that job.
For the Health Department, in maternal and child health, we have a youth advisory committee to help inform our policy and direction. We have, they also learn job skills like community assessment. We have public health outreach and education, and we partner with different community art organizations. It's a small number, but we offer training in videography and photography. The Office of Youth Trauma Service also has school-based programs, and we do outreach in schools. School health has specialized positions, they require training and experience. However, we accept four to six youth work students during the summer to provide work-study and tuition reimbursement for existing staff.
Is that all? Okay. So, again, I'd just like to say over and over again that we really need to focus on getting our students employed right after high school. There's a number of students, and they, we lose them and they go into the streets. So really start thinking outside of the box. And my second question, because I do have a whole lot, but just my second one. With Wreckin' Parks, I know you did a presentation to us on, I guess with the park system and improved innovations with utilizing the wonderful parks that we have in our city. I just had opportunity over the weekend to visit a camp in Moncton, I might pronounce it wrong, Camp Pataku or something. And I'm like, gee, this is something that we could definitely have in our parks in our city, like Lincoln Park, you know. Have you progressed on that, or did you want to talk about that?
Councilwoman, can you repeat that question for me again?
You had did a presentation on how we, you know, a lot of our young kids go to camps outside of the city. And we have wonderful parks here, and you did a presentation on how you were working to really start utilizing and fixing up the nat, nature and parks that we have here. And having our own camps where children can come for, and spend a week or two weeks. You want, you have an update on that?
Well, we are, now that we've adopted our youth, our Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights, we've now working in conjunction with our colleagues to start moving that program forward. Another area that we're doing is, we have, like I said, in Lincoln Park, we have a campground that we recently received some funding from D N R to renovate. So we're starting to plan to renovate that campground so that we could, as I stated in that presentation, instead of taking kids outside of the city for camping experiences, we can do it right there in Lincoln Park. So we are starting to plan of that, and also Mayor Hart Council with our nature education is developing a curriculum that we're gonna implement starting in the fall.
Okay. And there's also some wonderful things going on at the Silver and Arboreum too, that young people could take advantage of, and the museums that we have there. So there's a whole wealth of things that really all the agencies could take, be a part of and partner with each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first off, thank you to each of the agencies present for the work that you guys are doing for the youth. This is always the, I'd say, the most frustrating part of our budget process every year, at least for the past three years, is looking at this piece of the budget. I'm looking at page 35, and, you know, it says Mayor Pugh's five pillars that this budget was based off of. And that's education and youth engagement, public safety, accountability and transparency, economic development and jobs, and quality of life. And, in every single one of those five pillars, with exception to education and youth, they all keep up with the rate of inflation. And yet, education and youth engagement is actually below that. And so, most of these other areas, we've actually doubled our, you know, our percentage points commitment year over year. Whereas, in this region, it's the lowest at any of the five pillars. And so, that's why I do support Council President Scott's commitment to expanding the rec center hours and the days that it operates. I think that's a great start, and that's why I think this council is committed to doing that, and then some as well. But, you know, I can tell you, my district, every year I bring up the same exact thing suffers because we are a recreational desert. We have no rec, it just doesn't exist. So there's 43 rec centers in the city, which equates to over three per council district, and the fifth district has zero. We don't have programming, we don't have opportunities, there's nothing, zero. And so, and we have, just like every district, there's diverse communities, there's communities that have more needs than others. But, in none of those communities do we have anything. And so my question, I guess to, anybody can answer, but specifically Wreckin' Parks would be, what are we doing to address this issue? Because the only one quasi thing that even falls under this budget process that is in my district was the Northwest Driving Range, which it actually got killed this year. So, in fiscal year 18, there was a budget that actually kept it going. In fiscal year 19, that was cut in half. And right now, it looks like a, it looks like a forest. I mean, it's, there's nothing, there's nothing to operate there, the whole thing's just left, just looks like another vacant property. And so, my question is, A, on that one location, what are we gonna do about that this year? And in general, I mean, what needs to be done so that I have to stop asking the same question every single year about what we're gonna do to bring recreational opportunities to the fifth district and the northwest corner of the city?
To start first, the Northwest Golf Range, that, I'm not sure when the last time you've been by there, but after, well, it's since our last, since our conversation last week, that area has been improved tremendously. Got our team out there the next day, there was some miscommunication in our park maintenance. We are looking at programming options for the Northwest Golf Range is the option. I mean, as we all know, that is, that facility's not large enough for a driving range. I mean, it's nestled in a small area, the distance, maximum distance 250 yards. Most people who use, can't even use the drivers and those things. So, we're looking to see what we can do to maybe repurpose or reprogram that area. And I have, and I understand your concern. One of the things we're doing is we're working on a strategic plan that talks about Recreation 2025. What can Recreation, what can we do in the next six years? What can we physically afford in the next six years? As we all know, to build a new rec center, in today's times, that's 10 to 12 million dollars. Our capital budget's limited, just like all our other agents, there's only so much money for capital. So we average roughly about six or seven million. So, if we, you know, focus on building a rec center in just that district, that will take really almost two years of capital commitment. So what we want to do is look at other partners and see how we can partner with other areas that may be offering recreational opportunity. I know there's a Jewish community center there, and I know there's a membership fee. But, I've asked Bob Wanda Office to at least reach out to the Jewish community center and see if there's an opportunity that we can partner and to bring more kids into that area that we can offer on a temporary basis. Also, we do have, it's about the going of renovations, it's the Pemlico Training Facility, the athletic fields that's behind there. We're finishing up plans there to renovate that area. But we do understand that there are some challenges in the district. But, we do know that C.C. Jackson Rec Center is less than approximately a mile from the district of District 5. So, as we continue to try to explore our options, one of the things we want to encourage our citizens is that even though it's not in the fifth district, there is a rec center that's in close proximity, which is our C.C. Jackson Rec Center.
Okay, so that is, I mean, that entire answer is completely unacceptable. First of all, waiting three years to get anywhere is not acceptable as it is. But then to then talk about over the next six years, so then we're nine years in, that also doesn't fly. And, to say that another rec center is within a mile of one point of the district is kind of a silly, a silly thing to look at considering, if you look at that rec center in particular, or most, or many other rec centers, you see that you have multiple rec centers within a mile of each other. And so, when you look at actually servicing kids in the district, especially where there's the greatest need, if you do a mile marker from their home to that center, you're talking about multiple miles. And so, that isn't, that doesn't work. And then to talk about private, you know, clubs or centers that are across the city, whether it be the J C C, whether it be a Y, I mean, I don't, I can tell you, membership there is about $100 a month. That's not affordable for majority of the district. And so that's not an actual alternative. And so, what I've suggested, and I understand the capital cost in building a center, I've suggested multiple times over the past three years, is that we do make improvements to some of the things that are already in existence. And so, the Training Academy is an example, there's already a gym there, there's already fields there. And bringing some programming into the location and making improvements to that facility would be a start. There's also schools that are currently vacant in the district, I've suggested bringing programming into those, even if those hours are limited. But allowing the district and allowing people to utilize the gym and the fields and having some programming for the kids. And now we're coming on the summer months, and there are many kids who don't go to, who don't go to camp during the summer, don't have a program to go to in the summer. And they're gonna, you know, they're gonna be struggling again now, year after year. I know growing up in the Fall Staff community, most summers I didn't go to camp, and a lot of my neighbors didn't. And we tried to get creative and, you know, go outside and play baseball anywhere where we could. But, I mean, we have, there's already existing structures that could be utilized, but these doors are locked, the windows are boarded up. And it's really as simple as unlocking the doors, turning on the lights, and having, you know, one person, one person staffing it. And so, obviously, my long-term goal is to see, you know, build out that we can build onto one of these facilities, not necessarily a ground-up per se. But, you know, how about instead of talking about the next six years, we can talk about in the next six days before the summer starts, what we're gonna do to start some type of program up in the district. And it's, and again, it's really as simple, and my staff and my team is happy to partner with you guys, as we always have been. And we do appreciate our other partnerships on things that you guys have done. But, we, we're gonna be, we're committed to it, and we hope you're committed to opening up some of those facilities, making some slight improvements, some slight investments, and opening up those, you know, a couple of those buildings to the youth in the fifth district.
What I'll do is, again, Councilwoman, is, I hear your concerns. And when I talked about the six-year plan, I didn't say it was gonna take six years. But what we have to do as an agency is that, I think some of the challenges that I've seen since being here for roughly about two years is that, and I believe this came up in a council meeting, is that the way the city, when they originally built these rec centers, they didn't build them by districts. I can't explain why there's 43 rec centers and there's none in the fifth district. But what we'll do is, we'll definitely look and see what we can do, what kind of partnerships we can offer, and see what's the possibility. But it's just not as simple as just opening doors because it still takes manpower, and our budgets are limited. And so to bring in a new facility means that you gotta pull manpower from some other site. So, and we want to make sure that we can offer program and not just open a door. But, this is definitely something I would love to work with you in your office. And maybe what we'll do is, maybe next week, whenever the budget's over, maybe we can schedule a time that we can just, we can go in your district and maybe we can look at some of these sites that you're proposing.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to all of you for everything that you do for our young people. I will try to get through my questions as quickly as I can, but since we're talking about Wreckin' Parks, I'll start there. My apologies, Director Moore. One, I'd like to second the notion, my West Baltimore colleague, about just the need for more investment on the west side. Especially when we look at, you know, how many V R I zones are in that area, how much effort is put into violence reduction. We have to continue to swim upstream when it comes to supporting our young people and getting to the root causes of violence. And so, the question that I have, as we're talking about facilities specifically, what methodology does the department use to assess the conditions of recreational spaces? Is there a strategic plan or an ongoing assessment process that's held annually, biannually, or any sort of pattern or behind it? And the reason I'm asking that is that we've been out to every single facility in my district, and I appreciated you taking time to do that, to go to literally every basketball court, every field, every park space to look, and that was great. And we've seen, we've made progress since then, and I appreciate that. But the concern is that, you know, that should not really be the standard, that we have to go one by one with the agency director. And if there are, if you could speak to, and I think some of my colleagues are sort of getting to that, that, you know, so that we can better understand the methodology for looking at the condition of basketball courts or playgrounds, how often are they assessed? You know, who's, I know, and I know Ms. Morgan has come on board, so I know that that's happening. But, can you just speak to sort of the more, a more strategic plan to look at these facilities overall?
As a state to Councilman Yancy is that we are developing a strategic plan now as an agency. Can't say what happened that predates me. One of the things we're also looking at is, as part of the strategic plan, we're gonna look at an equity scorecard so that we can start scoring and ranking these various facilities based on various target areas. Not just a councilman's district or what's happening in the community. But, how do we score these so that going forward, starting this next budget year, we can use this equity scorecard to determine what capital projects we need to put on the list? The third thing that we're doing right now is we are investing money to do a facility assessment of all of our facilities. Because I think it's important that, before you start developing a capital plan and developing these equity scorecards, you need to know what's wrong with these facilities. So we, right now, have 13 of our rec centers have been assessed. By the end of the year, we will have all of the rec centers, all of our park maintenance buildings, as well as all of our other rec facilities beyond just rec centers assessed. And so all that will play a factor in us helping to develop the scorecard, scoring it, so that we can try to do a more sound job when it comes to what projects makes the list, how do we rotate that list? Just a quickly rundown, we have 110 outdoor basketball courts. We have 170 athletic fields. We have 145 playgrounds in our city. The average cost to replace an existing playground is roughly $75,000. We are fortunate enough that we get roughly about $300,000 from the state for our playground fund. And every year, we're trying to figure out what is that next playground? We do have Ashley, who's now our playground inspector on staff, and she's going around and she's assessing all of our playgrounds. So, I do agree that our facilities could use some renovations and updates. But, we are still, and I hate to continue to beat this dead horse, but we are limited in our funds. And we do the best we can to improve our facilities. But what this equity scorecard would do for us is at least give us a more sound system that we can determine what we rank and how we rank it, and what's the next thing that we move for. So I'm really excited to get this component in place.
And I'm glad to hear that's happening. And I think, one, just as an elected, it would be helpful. I mean, I'm looking forward to that so that I can convey to my constituents that, look, these things are being assessed. This particular lot or playground that you're concerned about requires X amount of dollars to repair, and it's in the strategic plan within the next four to five years. And I think, you know, when we were able to do that, I think it reduces the frustration that people have, but it also conveys that we have a vision and direction that we're moving towards. moving towards, that we can clearly convey to people. And, and, I mean, like I said, I'm, I'm thankful for the support from your department. We've worked very closely on several playgrounds and courts in my district specifically to do these assessments. But I just, you know, to have a, a, a process, I think, is incredibly important to me, and I know it's important to the constituents of Baltimore, so that we can show them that there's a clear vision and a priority for our young people in these, these both rec facility spaces and non-traditional spaces that young people play. And those are fields, those are courts, those are, are bas, those are playgrounds, et cetera. The other thing I wanted to, on this note, and I, I had some, Mr. Chair, I had some questions for other departments, but if you could just add me to the next round of questions, I'll, I'll continue to just focus, stay here for a second. The, well, I guess, as a follow-up to the two, two things you mentioned, what are the deadlines that you set for the department for the strategic plan and equity scorecard?
Our, our target right now is to have the, the rec 2025 plan completed by the end of this year, and that scorecard will be a part of that strategic plan.
So into 2019?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the other question I had was specifically for Budget Service number 645, back to the, the pool service. The, the metric basically states that the effectiveness of the pool system or the aquatics program is based on the condition assessment of the pools. One, can you talk a little bit about what that assessment is? And also, are there other ways that we can measure effectiveness of the aquatics program specifically beyond just the condition of the pool itself?
If you're looking at the slide, when we, when we look at efficiencies, we're, we're talking about, one of the things is, is the operational cost to recruit, to earn the revenue, is that one option. Basically, what our, our target would be is that of the total operating cost, that we try to recoup five percent.
Oh, no, no, that's not what I was referring to. Hold on.
That's not what you're looking at. You're looking actually...
Sorry. My apologies to my colleagues. No, there was a, there's, there's two, one that, that in the metrics column, it, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now. I've been posting, posting it away on my, in my book. There are, there's an assessment that talks specifically about aquatics, and, and the effectiveness is the word, effectiveness is the word that's used for the outcome stat that you submitted to the mayor's office. Like I said, it's under Mayor's Office of Innovation. It, it says effectiveness, and it talks just specifically about pool conditions. And, and really what I'm getting at is, I mean, the conditions of the pool and the maintenance of the pool is obviously paramount for our young people. But I look, I also view aquatics as a tool that we could be using to just engage young people throughout the summer, to help, as an enrichment activity, as a sport activity, that, you know, I think, are there other, other ways that we can look at the effectiveness of the program beyond just the mere, it's safe to get into the pool?
That's, I think, as I mentioned to the council president earlier, that is some of our assessments, things that we've used in the past. We're looking at some of our tools and figuring out what are the other things that we can use that can tell us more information. But I, I see what you're talking about. It's about the pool maintenance standard for our pools. One of the things our, our staff do every year is, is to try to make sure, to them, being, being effective and efficient is making sure that pools open every day. And when pools are down, that means that communities can't use them, kids having to go somewhere else. So that was one tool that they've used to measure their successes, you know, are the pools operating every day on a yearly basis? But definitely, this is something that we can definitely look and see in other assessment tools that we can use going forward.
Yeah. And, and the reason I'm saying that is sort of a larger point, and I'll, and I'll close here, Mr. Chair, is, you know, we're often counting, I feel like for a long time in the city, we've counted widgets, how many centers we have, are they open, are they effective? And, and often, I, some of my constituents focus on that side of the things as well, how many centers do we have in a, in a specific area? But one of the, the conversation I, I wanna continue to push forward is what's happening in these spaces? And then how can we measure success that way? So, you know, is it a matter of, do we have forty-three rec centers or fifty rec centers? Is great, but if those rec centers don't have Wi-Fi or don't have, and I'm not putting this on you specifically, obviously, you have budget constraints, but the point I'm trying to make is young people will come to spaces that are engaging, and, and they are getting something out of it. But younger people specifically want Wi-Fi, they want charge reports, they want technology, they want engaging activities that are culturally relevant to Baltimore. They, you know what I mean? Like, that's what's gonna get the kids in, because I've gone to centers that are sadly ni, they're nice, like, they've been invested in, and one in my neighborhood has been invested in within the last ten years or so. And it's a nice space, but, you know, it doesn't have a scoreboard, you know, so the kids, like, wanna do tournaments, but, you know, being able to count the score is important or see it. You know what I mean? And that's just like small, little things that I think if we can really just focus on, not just scoreboard specifically, but what's happening in the center, what kind of programming is, it's great to have them on Saturdays, but are there engaging activities happening on Saturdays? And, and really, that's just the, the larger conversation I wanna have about recreational spaces overall, is not so much like, are they, do they exist, are they in good condition, but more, we should be measuring success based on, you know, the outcomes, the, the innovations, the, you know, are they twenty-first century facilities? And I know that requires a lot of money, and I'm not trying to make it sound simple or easy, but when we measure, how we measure their effectiveness should reflect that vision that we're not just saying it's safe, but that, that how many young people are really getting something out of going to the pool or going to a rec space or a playground, and what's, and how are we measuring that? And, and I'll stop there. I think you got it.
I'm a firm believer that, that data tells a story, and that's one of the things that we're working daily to improve. We, we now have CityRec that can capture data in a much faster way than, than we've ever seen with previous software, which was Reg Pro. Also, with our, our new program in the vision, that's something that she's doing now, and she's assessing all of our programs. And, and we're, we're creating more of a program form and format that details more of, does this program really need to exist, why does it exist, do you keep a program, you know, offering a program and the data shows that only two people showed up, is that something that you need to continue to keep? So we're doing a, our goal is to do a better job of pulling the data so that we can have a better understanding of effectiveness and efficiencies of, of programs.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Council President, I know you had a quick follow-up to that?
No, not a follow-up. I just wanted to thank Director Moore for leading his response to that question by saying that he is looking toward implementing an equity scorecard for how his agency operates, and to remind all agency here, so here today or not, that that's how everyone should be operating moving forward in the city of Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question has largely been answered, so I'm going to pass.
Got it. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanna talk about health, Service 316, Youth and Trauma Services. So I think we all know that I'm a firm believer that violence is the public health and a disease. And when we see that, and we know that, and we understand that that's how we should operate as a city, what I want to know is a few things. One, how can a city like Baltimore, where its leadership acknowledges that to be in existence, only spend about seven hundred and forty-seven thousand of its own dollars to reflect how the Health Department is gonna combat trauma and violence in the city? But knowing that Safe Streets is no longer under the Health Department, can we talk about what evidence programs are provided to youth who have experienced trauma in the city, and how the youth are identified through this service? Mr. Cilio?
Thank you, Mr. President. Some of those programs I mentioned earlier, and I am going to provide a list of all of them to the council, so you all have it as a reference. As far as the funding issue, certainly, we are, just like all the other agencies here that have, have spoken about their various programming, we are constrained by funding. I would say, you know, we've heard a lot about, we need all these various agencies to be trained. You know, we are limited to one higher-level employee and a, and someone who works under her that does all of this work. So the need to have more resources in order to be able to meet the demand is certainly there. But as far as programming itself, I mentioned earlier, the Supporting Male Survivors of Violence program, DOJ-funded, Madison East End community, very, very small geographic area that it's targeted toward. The Youth Services Advocacy Project is citywide. But that, again, you know, we have, I think it's, once we're fully staffed, which we're in the process of bringing somebody on now, I think it's gonna be three employees that are working throughout the city to get those services out into the community. And again, that's the entire city. Now, we do have partners and things we bring to the table on those. We have the Family Resiliency Project, which is the one centered around opioids. All of these programs are funded by the, either Department of Justice, we have a couple that are CDC-funded, but these are all grants that we've gone after. Now, a limitation of grants, as, as my colleagues can also speak to, is those grants come with certain evaluations that go along with them, they come with certain geographic areas that need to be proposed and, and, and worked in. So because of that, you tend to be really constrained as far as who you can serve, how you can serve them, and what you can do. There's not a lot of flexibility in that. So when it comes to general funds, obviously, that gives us a lot more flexibility and we able to do a lot more with that. But as of right now, as you mentioned, that is limited.
So I think this, this leads into this, but is general funds and the changing of programs operated specifically out of this service and out of the Health Department, the reason why this service operated and worked with a hundred and nine young people in fiscal year eighteen and only plans to serve seventy in fiscal year twenty?
I would need, so that, that is going to be the direct result of, for example, if you look at the, are you looking at the slide that I'm looking at or the budget book?
Budget book.
Okay. Well, the slide that I have speaks to a decrease in the funding for the Supporting Male Survivors of Violence grant. And then I believe this number reflects the fact that the, that DOJ grant was front-loaded, it's a, I think it was a five-year grant, and it had more money upfront. So as the years go on, we have to unfortunately reduce the number of outreach workers and caseworkers, and that's what's reflected in those numbers there as far as why there's a decrease from eighteen to nineteen, is 'cause we'll have less, less employees.
Thank you. And I think that, Ms. Cilio, you know that I truly believe in the work of the Health Department, that the Health Department, when allocated appropriate funds, does great work to help and have outcomes. So for me, my next question is for you, has the Health Department approached, BBMR, have you approached the administration about having stronger investments? For example, bringing back programs like Operation Safe Kids that work directly with young people who may have committed their, their first act of violence and trying to divert them so that they don't go back? Those are the kind of things that I think, right now, with the amount of violence that we see, with the conversation around our young people in Baltimore that we should be having, and I'm, we're not seeing that reflected in the budget. And we know that this is not the, the result of the Health Department. In fact, we know that this budget is not the result of the current administration. But we have to understand with the amount of trauma and amount of violence in Baltimore that we have to think differently. So have you guys started to have those conversations about that? And then, of course, the other question that I asked you guys previously, even to the point where have you cost out what it would cost for the Health Department to have trauma responders respond to incidents of violence in the city of Baltimore alongside the Police Department? So that they are doing their job, but that you're also interceding in that trauma right there, when those families, when those young people are dealing with the loss of their father, their brother, their mother?
So back a couple years ago now, I guess it's more, maybe like a year and a half or so, we used to be called the Office of Youth Violence Prevention, right? And that's when Safe Streets was under the office, had a different name, and in a lot of ways, it really had a different mission. Around the time that we, that we learned that Safe Streets was gonna be moving out, we had to sort of assess what is going to be the role of the Health Department in addressing the issues around violence in the city. And in conversations between myself and Dr. Wen and other members of our leadership at the time, we came to the conclusion that, that the need around trauma and working with people who've been victims and, and, and breaking that silent, that, that cycle that comes from people who have had traumatic experience and then go on later to be engaged in, in violence, was the right role for us to play. And because we work so closely with Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore, and we work on the, you know, obviously, the both drug and mental health side of things, we thought it was the appropriate space for us to be in. So at that time, we really pursued more and more outside grants. A lot of those DOJ grants I've mentioned came around that time. So we've been successful there. As far as advocacy, you know, I, I think we're hearing resounding from council members, I mean, you know, we've met with your office, we've been, I talk to Councilman Cohen probably multiple times a week about these issues, and, and I think, you know, we certainly agree with the members that, that feel strongly that this needs to be invested in. And I would say, you know, as far as what model works the best, I mean, there was conversations that we're having early on with Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice around, you know, is going back and looking at a model like Operation Safe Kids, is that the right investment? I think the prior administration came to the conclusion that that wasn't necessarily the right program at the time. That can be relooked at now, obviously, under new leadership, but at the time, that wasn't seen as the right model. But I think we have a really good idea now as to how we can have an impact, we just need the resources to do it. So it's certainly something that we, we look forward to continue the conversation and having great conversations with the new administration about.
And thank you. And we look forward to hearing that, especially about targeting. We know the most, the children that are most at risk, we know the children that are suffering from trauma, because we know which one of their parents died, which ones their friends died. So we have to be targeted and start somewhere, and I think you start with those that we know are in most of need. My, my last question, Mr. Chair, is really for both the school system and Recreation and Parks. You guys know that I'm very big on partnerships and building bridges together, and we know every summer that the director's gonna be hiring young people to be lifeguards and do all these other things in Recreation and Parks. Has the school system reached out or vice versa about partnering to make sure that our young people can be trained, even at schools, especially those that have pools, like Mervo, you know, other places that have pools, to become the lifeguards for Wreckin' Parks in the summertime? A few years ago, myself and members of the school system and Recreation and Parks went to Chicago, and we went to a high school where they, at that high school, they taught young people not only to be lifeguards for their Recreation and Parks program, but also to be referees for the younger kids' baseball and basketball games. I think that when you think about providing employment opportunities for our young people and those that are interested, especially the student athletes that we have, I think that would be a great thing. I just wanted to see if you guys have thought about that kind of partnership.
I can't speak directly to if that kind of a dialogue's happening now, but I can find out, and we will get back to you.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna say that that dialogue is going to happen sometime between now and the beginning of the school year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Council President, I got one comment. We did offer at four of the schools, NAF, Dunbar, Edmanson, I can't think of the fourth one. We have been, oh, since 2014, we've been doing a learner's twin program, and we pull lifeguards from those, those four schools, but we are assessing that program as well to determine if that's the most efficient way. So, but we did partner even through this current school year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, do you wanna make that an official request, the thing about the, okay, so?
So the first official request would be for the Health Department around trauma costing out, what it would, the cost would be for them to restart a program like Operation Safe Kids? And then the second question for them is, what would it cost for them to hire trauma professionals to have responding to incidents of violence in the city?
So let's make that one request, Jeff, that'll be number four.
Sure.
Okay, and then the...
And for BCRP and for the school system, a partnership to train young people who are students to take the jobs at Wreckin' Parks, the lifeguards, the other things that they can do with Director Moore, especially in the spring and the summer months.
Okay, so that's for city schools and Wreckin' Parks, and we'd like a joint response on that before Labor Day?
I'm sorry?
A joint response on that one before Labor Day?
Confirm.
Is that, Mr. President? Mr. President, you good with before Labor Day, that response?
Well, I'm gonna believe that schools should start before Labor Day, so before the last Friday in August.
Duly, duly noted. Last Friday in August. That's, that's number five, and that's from the President, and that's for Wreckin' Parks and city schools. And once budget hearings are over next week, we had an offer from Citystat, so one of their analysts will be helping out, and we'll get with Jeff Amros from Mayor Young's office to sort through a kind of a, a protocol for sending all these responses in. In the past, we received kind of piecemeal responses, and we're gonna ask them to aggregate all those responses and then send it to us in packages. So please don't communicate directly with the committee on this, you'll get information from Jeff, and please, you know, communicate with him. Mr. President, you're good?
Yes, sir.
Heidi Wins... Heidi, when's the library renovation fully completed? Mike?
The grand reopening is September 14th. Construction will be completed before then, but we're also improving the children's area and the basement, sort of separately, redoing the gardens. And so, September 14th block party, you will all be invited, and ribbon-cutting celebrations all day, and activities in every space.
I think I speak for all of us when I say we are all very excited.
Great.
Thanks for your work on that. Director Moore, I wanted to publicly thank you for being on track to get all the pools open on time this year. That is certainly a first as long as I've been here, and I know that we all appreciate that. For the President Scott's priority on the, keeping all the rec centers open on Saturdays, just wanted to jump into that in a little more detail. I know we'll be meeting later this week with Pete Hammond to kind of talk through that request in more detail. But the 3.4 million, does that cover the cost of all the remaining rec centers outside of the eight or nine that currently operate in VRI's?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the 3.4 million just cover, how many rec centers total do we have, 32?
We have 43, well, actually, we have 44 by the end of summer, yes.
Forty-four by the end of summer, and how many are in VRI areas?
Eight.
Eight, so 36, so 3.4 million will cover 36 rec centers.
Right. Because what that does is it gives us, in order to extend hours, is more so than just paying utilities, is adding additional staffing.
Right.
And so that's the key, is that you're adding additional full-time staff as well as part-time staff, because as Councilman Burnett made a comment earlier, we want to make sure that these structured programs, that there's some kind of structural learning and engagement versus just opening doors.
So do you expect that we're going to have to hire up to meet that staffing need, or is that something that you've already got covered with existing staff?
No, we're gonna have to add more staffing.
Okay. And the three, so just to reiterate, the 3.4 million covers the operations for the 36 rec centers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what would the hours be on Saturdays?
That's something that we, currently, our centers that are open on Saturdays, they're nine to five, and then we have the extended hours. Because of the eight center, eight VRI sites, only four are currently open during the day on Saturday. That's C.C. Jackson, Chick Web, Morale Park, and I can't think of the fourth one. And that's nine to five. So they're now operating nine to 10, because they extended for the VRI nights. The other centers close at five. So what we want to assess also is, should it be a nine to five or should it be a 12 to seven?
Oh, so you're saying it would be 12 to seven?
I'm saying, we're trying to assess which one is better. Is it a nine to five operation to open those additional centers, or should it be a 12 to seven?
Okay. Yeah, when we meet with Chief Hammond, I think we, the President and I would like to discuss, you know, all the options available and see what, see what works best. But, okay, that's a great start. Very excited about that. Councilwoman Snead?
Thank you. I'm just curious, for the employees working in these programs, how often do they get training and development? And then I'm wondering, how often are they asking the actual youth that are there what they want to see and what they want to do in some of these programs? So two-part question. Training and development, how often are these employees getting this to have a better impact with our youth? And then also, whatever our youth are saying of what they want in these programs? Do we ask them?
Councilwoman Snead, one of the things that I want to stress is that we're continuing to assess our program and how we've gone about communicating in the past. I can't, I mean, I think we have to make clear that there is, there were some challenges that I inherited, that we're trying to fix. And I can't say that we, I guess, to really get to your original question, one thing I've asked all of our centers to do is to create a community advisory group. In that advisory group, they should not only just have, it should be a wide range to include youth. And the benefit of that is so that we can get true assessment of what the community wants. Councilperson Milton may be familiar, the Tuana Rec Center that we're getting ready to open now, one of the things our agency has spent a ton of time is meeting with the community, because it's not about what wrecking park wants. It's what, I agree with you, it's what the community wants. So we are doing a much better job of outreach to redevelop some of our programming. The second thing is that our rec center staff have in-service monthly. All of our center directors, all of our rec leaders are, have various in-service programs that they are trained on constantly to continue to improve and hone in on their skills. So that answers your training and development question. But we are doing a better job of trying to engage with the community more, so to make sure that the program that we're offering is a program that they're interested in. And so that's, I think that answers both of your questions.
Can I ask the dollar amount that you put in for training and development for these employees?
I will have to get that information. I can get it to you. I don't have a problem. I don't have it in front of me now, no.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's for all of them. It's not for just wrecks and parks. It's for MoED, it's for health, it's for all of the above.
Okay, sure. Again, Jason Perkins-Cohen, MoED. I'll just focus on our two largest
programs in terms of youth engagement. As part of Youth Works, actually, we hire youth workers to design and implement a survey of other youth workers. That is their job. And they have some help from our staff, but they are really going out and talking to other youth workers. And so in the past, obviously, it hasn't happened for the summer yet, but in the past summers, they talked to hundreds of workers at different sites on a survey that they designed, and then they present it to our management team. And I'll give you one example of something that they, the youth identified as important, which we're implementing this year, was, is earlier notice about their jobs, was one of the things that they wanted us to focus on. And so last Friday, Friday just passed, that's why we mailed 6,800 offers to employers as the first round. So they would have more than a month's worth of notice about, well, really, a month's worth of notice about their job. They should be receiving them today and tomorrow or whenever. But there's a whole host of other things that they come out. I'd be happy to share that with you. Again, it's youth-designed, youth-informed. On, with our youth opportunity centers, we are engaging in reinvigorating our centers, and part of that will be led by youth. So we're going to have, develop a youth council at the YO Center from current and former participants to tell us both about the programming, the building, the types of services we're offering. And that should happen, that should start this summer.
Can you give me a dollar amount of how much you are invested in the employees there? How much goes into training and development of the employees that are working with the youth?
Yeah. I'll have to give that to you. I don't think we have, we'll have to, we'll give you something for the agency. I don't know that we have something specifically for, something in our budget for youth, but I'll find a way to get you that specific number.
For the Pratt Library, most of our staff have formal education that work with youth and teens in either child development or specifically children and teen services in public libraries or some sort of educational background. So most of them have formal schooling, but we do also continually take advantage of both national, state, and local trainings that are offered in breast practices servicing urban youth in particular. And we send our staff to conferences specifically with programming in mind that will come out as outcome-based programming. And we, most of our branches include youth in the development of their program. So they're, especially with teens, they're actively working with teens to develop the content of the programming. They may have teen advisory councils that help say what they need or what they want. When we develop spaces, we talk specifically to groups of teens to ask what they would like spaces to look like. It's a very much a youth-engaged focus for us.
For school health, all of our nurses receive, they have to keep up all of their certifications. So they have annual training and particular professional development days that take place. They also have to have, for example, their CPR and those types of trainings. First aid, that's always done on an annual basis. It's the same with maternal and child health and anyone working with the children in maternal and child health. We also have a series of undoing racism trainings that have occurred particularly in the area of maternal and child health. And we're trying to expand that throughout the Health Department to a certain extent. We have youth development around the You Choose campaign, where we have youth providing input, and that campaign is around sexual health. And we have a youth advisory committee that also helps inform some of the maternal and child health programs. I'll pass it off to Greg for the youth trauma.
And in youth trauma, as I mentioned earlier, we have, you know, our training actually within the division as well. So those folks are always kept up to date on the newest models through SAMSA and others. But as far as the numbers, we need to pull those numbers. But each one of our grants includes professional development pieces. So a lot of that is getting involved in the various associations and things that do the work and making sure that we always have the most up-to-date information. But we are working with young people as well. They do advise a lot of the work we do. We have community-based advisory boards, and young people participate in those. And that's a big part of how we continue to make sure that we're meeting young people where they are and serving the best we can.
In Head Start, all staff are required to have a minimum of 15 clock hours of professional development a year. We exceed that typically with all staff, because we have monthly in-service, whether it's a full day or it's a half day. And as far as the participants and what they're interested in, the parents drive the program. You know, we do surveys mid-year, we do surveys at the end, we do the surveys at parent-teacher conferences. We want to hear what are some of the things that would help them and what they're interested in for the program. We often hear, they want homework for three-year-olds. They want more homework. They want lots of field trips. They want a longer school year. They like the school year to start before Labor Day as well. We hear lots of those things from our families, and we help to try to drive our programming around what their needs are.
Family League hosts a number of professional development trainings for our partners. Actually, last month, we had one entitled Youth Voice, Councilwoman. You can go to our website just to take a look at our PD schedule. The, really, in terms of the opportunities to attend, it's absolutely free, and you don't necessarily have to be one of our funded partners to participate. So you can sign up and register on our website. We also increase opportunities in terms of hosting some focus groups with young people who have lived experience, especially in some challenging areas. I like to call them intersection entrepreneurs. Some others call them squeegee kids. But hearing kind of their experience that they've had in terms of what has drove them to these street corners and in terms of putting them in unsafe environments. So we actually use this to help tailor kind of some of our program opportunities that we like to tender for competitive bid in the future.
Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank President Scott for his comments or questions to the Health Department related to youth and trauma services. So it saved me one of my questions, but I do want to make a statement related to that. And I recognize that budgets are nuanced, and they, there's a lot of variables that go into creating budgets. And I recognize the challenges that all of our agencies are experiencing as it relates to providing much-needed resources to our constituents. But when I look at the Health Department's budget and see a budget that reflects five times the dollar commitment to animals that are in trauma, more so than youth that are in trauma, I'm always going to have a problem with that type of budget. We could only find 750,000 for our youth in trauma, but when you talk about animal services, we have 3.5 million. And I know that budgets aren't just, but I think budgets reflect our priorities. I think budgets reflect what's important to us. And if youth and the trauma that they're experiencing is critical to us and to the city, we've got to figure out how to find more dollars to put in that, in that area. Or we're going to continue to have a repeating of what we're already having on the streets of Baltimore. My first question is to the school system. I didn't want you all to feel lonely over there. When I looked at the presentation, I didn't see much that was mentioned about homeless youth. And so can you tell me, what do you, how do you determine the homeless youth that are in the schools and what kind of services are being provided for them?
As far as out-of-school time services, any time that there is a fee associated with participating in a program, homeless youth are automatically, they do not have to pay that fee. So that's one way to just make those kinds of programming more accessible. We don't have anything that specifically targets homeless youth. I believe there are other agencies that do have programming specifically for that group of students. But we do try to make sure that our program locations are geographically diverse. So no matter what part of the city you're in, you have access to something that would be appropriate based on the grade level and need of the student. And anytime there is a fee, we make sure that that fee's waived.
So if you, if you were providing services specifically to homeless youth, do you have a sense of how, you know, what that population is? How many homeless youths would we be servicing?
I don't.
Does some, oh, somebody does, okay.
Good afternoon. Melissa Broome, City Schools. I just want to flag that. I think what Laura's saying is that in the, for this particular presentation today about out-of-school time, we don't have specific programming for homeless youth, but we have several other initiatives under the, we follow the Federal McKinney-Vento Act in terms of serving our homeless students. And we have an entire memo that I can get to you that outlines what that population looks like currently at city schools, what we're providing, who we're partnering with, what we've done this year, and what we're going to do going forward. We're just not the right staff folks to be able to answer the specifics, but we can get it to you.
Okay, so when you all come later, I can, I can get more detail?
Definitely. We'll be back tonight.
Okay.
Thanks.
My second question was from MoED, and related to the youth opportunity. I see that, it says that for FY19, well, FY19 and FY20, the target for number of youth opportunity participants served is 850. In the city of Baltimore, what's the population that would be considered under that category? I don't have the figure in front of me. I recall there being a report about opportunity youth in Baltimore City. I don't want to go off the top of my head. It's much, much higher than 850. I assume that's what you're going to, and I can-
I won't hold you to it if you just give us a, at least a guess.
The number that pops in my head is from a report that said 16,000. So again, that is, you know-
Okay, let's lay, let's say it's 10,000.
Yes, right.
And 850, we're reaching 850 of 10,000 of our most vulnerable youth. I don't even know how that's a target. I mean, I know that, I mean, and once again, we're going, the theme of this week is going to be, we don't have enough resources. But if we know that 10,000 are some of our most vulnerable youth in the city, and we already know that the Health Department doesn't have enough money for the trauma, I don't even understand what these targets even mean. Because even if you, even if you achieve your target, we don't achieve our target.
Yeah, I mean, I completely agree. It's not, it's not sufficient. We would, I mean, the youth opportunity is not just an open door. It's intensive services, and it's the target that we provide that's attached to this funding stream. But it's not nearly sufficient for the needs of Baltimore City. Now, this is just one, one specific funding stream. It's youth opportunity. So there's other ways that we, we serve this population and other organizations that serve.
So, and I know you're limited in what, so I'm going to leave it at this, and Demond, if you have to add to it. I know that earlier, during budgets presentation, you know, they talked to us about, they make recommendations to the administration. Now, we don't know what recommendations they're making as it relates to cost savings. You know, and so we don't, at least I don't, always have conversations with the individuals who are determining, you know, where these, the budget's going, where these monies are going. And so I'm trusting oftentimes that the agencies are making these asks. And so I don't even know what kind of ask you're making to the mayor's office, to the administration, as it relates to, hey, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor, me reaching 850 of this population is not going to help Baltimore. I've got to have resources in order to reach more of these young people, or, or our city is continuing, is going to continue to slide in the direction that it's sliding. And so I'm trusting that you're asking for resources that are going to allow for you to reach more than a tenth or a fifth of the number of young people that we've got to reach if we're going to have any, make- to reach if we're going to have any, make any headway in the city.
You can be certain that we have, and that we've put, we have a proposal that I'm happy to share about costing out what another youth opportunity center would, would run. Happy, I'm happy to share it with the council.
We, we need to know what that, because that should be a part of our ask. That should be a part of what we're asking for this budget, if that's $2 million, if that's $3 million. Just as critical as the ask is for extended rec centers, we should be asking for additional dollars for these, these targeted youth.
I'll provide it to the council.
Councilman, can I just, can I just add something there, something we had shared earlier with the council? Agencies are given an opportunity to ask for enhancement requests in the budget process. Those are all reviewed. I think we had actually shared the full packet of what we got from agencies with council, but if not, I can share you that. We do set some limits on what they can ask for just to be reasonable. We allow the larger agencies to ask, have two requests, and then the small ones just to have one request, but we do get, I think this year we got 35 or so requests for things, and then we do review those as a team to see if there's additional things we want to invest in. But I want to just be clear that agencies do have an opportunity to ask. They have to be choiceful about what they think is their biggest priority, but we do get those requests.
No, I understand, but I just can't imagine with the goals that have already been stated for our city and for this budget, that if somebody asks for additional money for this particular target area of youth, that somebody in the administration would say no to it. So I'm going to assume that the administration is not being asked until we see something that says that they have been.
Can I, can I jump in? Chairman?
One, one second. So colleagues, as a reminder, it's 12:11 PM right now. This panel will end at 1:00 PM. Councilwoman Snead, you got an add-on for that?
So, because I feel like we have facts. We keep saying each time, Mr. Sennedy, that, hey, our children are priority, we want police to get less money and make sure that our youth and our, and our seniors are taken care of, so we won't have the same issue. So it shouldn't be up to finance and the Budget Department to really take a good look at that, to say, even though you're not asking for this, can we, we're going to, we're going to put more money here, Madam Mayor or Mr. Mayor, to make sure that all of these things are covered, because they're really the priority for, for our administration anyway, for us as council people, to make sure that we don't have what's happening down at the harbor or anything, to make sure that our communities are kind of taken care of. That's all. Thank you, Chairman, for that.
So, just to talk about, in the early stages of the budget planning process, we do sit down with the administration and their team, their senior staff, to talk about how much was allocated to each, you know, pillar in the budget, education versus public safety versus economic development and so forth. They do have the ability in our process to move money around between those. This year, they chose, again, because a lot of the focus on the, or I should say, the prior administration was on violence reduction, that they chose to kind of keep each area flat. But that doesn't mean that if we get a good proposal from one of these agencies on a good service, that it doesn't get seriously considered. To the point about, is it our role to kind of make that move? Yes, we play a role in that, but we do have to rely on the agencies, the subject matter experts, to choose what they think are the best things to ask for. I can tell you, five or six years ago, we had a process where we got overwhelmed with hundreds of requests, and that just wasn't very helpful. So collectively, we agreed to tailor it and allow agencies to make a couple of requests. And again, we'd be happy to share what those were. I think we actually had sent that over to council, but we can do that again, so you can see the content and the types of things that we get requests for that was an agency priority of what to ask for.
Yeah, I would like to see it, thank you.
And on the, I should say, on the, you know, in terms of the, the program, in terms of youth versus other pillars, you know, a lot of the focus has been on trying to find more efficient ways to deliver our public safety services and be able to invest in things like Safe Streets, which was there last year, Broca and things of that sort. So there has been an effort to look at those more preventive-type services in the last two years.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark, you have a follow-up to that?
I have a follow-up to the process, because I think it's important, and I'm not sure where we are in this administration with the process. But we've been, all right. What I would like to see is that certainly city council members are allowed in when agencies make their lunchroom appeals to the mayor and the Board of Estimates. Now, lunchroom being, that's where it always used to be, which is the mayor's room with the long table. In other words, it used to be, at one point, that agencies would come in and make a pitch for the budget they wanted, and, and nobody went crazy. Some should've, like Racket Parks, but no one went crazy or anything, but they made, and then what that did was it gave us, council people, a chance to think about it. Now, this is before a page is printed of a budget. And to think about the discussion about different aspects, and to begin to kind of see what we thought about it in our branch of government. Then there were, then there were, panels came in for a while of people that I don't know who they were, and somehow they got to make recommendations, and we didn't. And there was a budget book that we were dealing with that came from, in other words, the feedback was coming from people picked by, I guess, a mayor to sit in as community and to make recommendations based on what agencies were asking for. But since the panels were formed by a mayor, you know, it's sort of, and we weren't allowed to be part of the process. So that, so what I'm, what I would like to know is, is it, what I would like to say is, we need to be, we council members need to be allowed into the presentations that are made originally by agencies to the mayor and her Board of Estimates and her finance people. So we know what people want, we know why what's being turned down sometimes, a lot of times it makes all the sense in the world, so we know. And it should be, I mean, it should be public to the extent that people can fit into the room. I'm sure there'll always be a seat for you, Ms. Kim. So I would like that to go onto some kind of record, so that we, we can change the way, well, I don't even know what, how it's done now, and you probably don't either, because it's all changed. But as things are evolving, I'd like to see it evolve that way. We need to hear what agencies are asking for, so that we hear that story, and we used to be able to, and we need to restore that practice. Thank you.
So- Councilman, Councilman, oh, Bob, go ahead.
I can just respond really, really quickly. I, I would like the budget process to be as transparent as possible, and I really do mean that. I would love to have enhancement requests that agencies make to be available. I would love to further, they, today, agencies write budget proposals, and that's what our staff reviews, and I, we have not got the permission yet, but I would like to ultimately make those documents public as well, just so folks can see the content. In terms of the transparency, you know, something that came up this morning is, there's, you know, our challenge and our role is that there are a lot of asks, but there are a lot of things that we do recommend where we think there are reasonable savings options. And I can tell you, there is usually very strong pushback from the agencies themselves about those items, and sometimes we're not able to execute those. I would like to, if we have the transparency on the ask side, I would like there also to be transparency on some of the recommendations on areas where we think can be saved, that haven't gotten approved and haven't made the way in the budget, so you can kind of see the range of choices that we're dealing with when we put the budget together.
Transparency would be, I think, a very healthy thing.
I, yeah, I, I do-
Both, both ways.
Ultimately, we have to, you know, meet the needs and make sure that the mayor is comfortable with that in terms of the planning process, but it's something that we will talk to the administration about, and we have over many years.
Okay, so that's a good idea, if I may just finish up. That's, that's fair enough, and I meant it that way. We need to be part of, we need to be part of the dialogue. We don't have the last word on what goes into the Board of Estimates request that then comes to us, but we have very little that we can do when it gets to us. So we need to be in the mix as well as the Board of Estimates, frankly, of what the, what the debate is, and the resources, and what, what the choices are. And I think that finance has every right to be heard also as, why things get cut. We won't agree if it's something that we don't, you know, agree with, but we need to be, we need to hear more of that dialogue as we, in the council, move into charter changes that are more, better balancing the role of the council in finance. Thank you, and thank you for your leadership. It's the, the culture of the relationship has certainly brightened with finance.
Councilman Stokes, then followed by Cohen, Henry, and Middleton.
This question is just for the Health Department. I know, excuse me, did you deal with youth trauma and opioid? My question was, and Councilwoman Clark, we've been talking about it, about our seniors here in Baltimore. Absolutely, when that department went over to the Health Department, to me, it got swallowed up, and some of my senior buildings, they have no programming. So I like to work with your office in terms of identifying some of the senior buildings in my district that absolutely have no senior outreach. I mean, I understand your budget, but at one time, that was a cabinet position, the senior programming, and again, it disappeared, it got swallowed up, and the tension that the seniors were getting back then is not there anymore. So I would like to work with your group in terms of identifying some of the senior buildings in my district that have nobody from the Health Department coming to talk about how they can help with their Medicare, Medicaid, all that information, because there's a number of them that called me and say, what happened to the senior program? And I've been talking about this for a while, so I'd just like to work with the Health Department to make that happen.
Thank you. Deputy Commissioner of Health, Tan Hyung, is actually the head of Senior Services for the, for the Health Department. But I can tell you, if you want to provide a list of whatever the centers are that are of particular concern, I can definitely take all of your questions back to her. I can also tell you that in terms of this year's rounds, we were permitted to put forth two enhancement requests. One of them was around seniors, and the other was for Vision to Baltimore for providing eyeglasses to children. If children can see, read, do well in school, they're less likely to drop out, and in this way, it actually helped, it helps our youth.
Real quick, I know we're not talking, but I, I actually like to, a young lady named Nina, Nina, Nia, she has a grandparents day, and I like to see that implement with our program, matching young people with the older seniors in some of the senior buildings, because it works, the program she's doing, but I think that'd be a great initiative for the Health Department to start or look at. Thank you.
Well, certainly, take a look at that.
Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to sort of pick off, pick up on where one of my colleagues, Councilwoman Snead, left one of her questions off, which is consulting young people in the creation of budgets. We're talking a lot about trauma and trauma-informed today, and for me, that conversation started with a hearing, a joint hearing of the Education and Public Safety Committees that myself and then Chairman Scott, now President Scott, held. And it was actually the young people that consistently lifted up this theme of the level of trauma that they are exposed to. And so, moving forward, we then started thinking about crafting policy, and we've been working with Director Moore and Commissioner Giraza and the Health Department, as well as others, to create legislation to address that need. So the cycle is, it starts with young people lifting up their own needs, and then we, as legislators, act. So I'm curious for you all, since you are youth-serving agencies, do you begin in your budget process by consulting with young people? Because if budgets are moral documents, if they are a set of our city's priorities, then I would think that young folks themselves would be centered in those conversations. So my question is, what are you doing specifically around your budget to engage young people proactively informing those priorities?
So, you know, I think the, to Councilman Pinkett's line of questioning, I think when we have the questions with young people, mostly what we hear is more. It's not, it's not so much, in terms of my agency, I can't speak to others. It's not so much a focus of, like, just taking youth works. What we hear back is, we would like, you know, more people offer a job, we would like it to be more hours, we would like it to be more weeks. So we are getting that feedback, but we are running into the same problem of it's more of a resource thing than a, for, for some of our limited programs on youth, than the way we're allocating resources. And of course, you know, one of the other things that we hear young people say is about they want, they don't just want summer jobs, they want jobs year-round. And so, you know, we hear that, you know, whether we're talking about additional youth centers, year-round youth works, we have proposals, but it does, at the end of the day, it requires the resources themselves.
From a Racket Park perspective, I think one of the things we want to do going forward is we, as I stated earlier, as we form these advisory groups at our rec centers and we engage youth more, that's something that we definitely can implement and get any more feedback from, from them. And some of it is just send around, what's their program, what they're interested in, and that can help you put your budget together from, or support some of their program. So it's just getting their feedback and getting them more engaged, and that's something we want to do.
For the Pratt, an example I would give of how we've done this, would be this teen center at Central Library, which I've alluded to several times. It's three times the size of what they previously had at Central, and that was because a group of teens were coming in specifically asked what services they want there, what they wanted the space to look like, how it would be developed. And that's how we developed the budget for that capital project around that space specifically. So that's an example of how we do that. With our city budget, I would say that would be the primary areas we would focus on. The development of our programs, those are primarily privately funded, but again, we take into consideration what the teens are asking us to host in our buildings, and that's how we develop those programs.
Primarily, our youth engagement has been centered around young, having young people review our proposals and grant proposals and make them reviews. When it comes to a budget development perspective, I think that is something that we can pursue as a part of our strategic plan that we're laying out for the next three to five years for our organization. I have a young person in my office doing a paper right now on participatory budgeting, so as soon as I get back, I'll let him know how timely it is.
So the Head Start federal model requires that parents are engaged at many different levels, including the creation and adoption of the budget. And so they, their voice is heard at the center level all the way up to the administrative level as to far, as far as what their priorities are, is aligned to our goals and objectives for the short term, but also for the next five years. The federal level requires their approval of our budget, or it's not accepted and funded. And so we absolutely listen to their voice and make adjustments as we hear what their, what their goals are.
For health, I think I mentioned before that our youth develop most of the content for the sexual health program. They developed the full campaign for You Choose. We talked to our Youth Advisory Committee, they provide input about priorities, both in terms of the programming content and the implementation. The recast grants were based on being driven by young people, in fact. The recast grants are small grants, community-based grants in the Penn North area. And for the You Choose process, we did do a youth assessment, a youth-friendly assessment for sites and services, what they'd like to see. The recast board and committee have fully disclosed their budget and make all the final budgeting recommendations available prior to their, their being submitted, and the decisions are made based on voting. We do surveys for family planning services as well to help direct our purchases.
City Schools traditionally has provided opportunities for community, including youth, to weigh in on district priorities. This year, there were a number of public engagement sessions specifically to give feedback on where the greatest priority should be put financially as far as our district priorities moving forward, and there is typically a youth-specific engagement opportunity to weigh in on budget priorities. to weigh in on budget priorities.
Mr. Senome?
So, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was going to be answering this question. I was used to going to every other, other agency.
You're up.
I'm up. So we have, as I mentioned earlier today, we have been doing a lot of community outreach events, and we have had some kids participate in those events. We've been trying to get out to as many neighborhoods as possible to hear from folks upfront in the process of what their priorities are, and happy to try to participate in that in any way we can. We have had events where, partnering with the Mayor's Office, where we've had kids come in and do, we've done a presentation to them about how the budget process works, and also give them a real-life example about a, a line item of the budget and let them team up and try to take sides, like which item would they rather invest in. It's been more for, just an exercise to let kids, show kids how we, you know, how the process works, and, and give them some practice of making, making their case. And we've done that over the last three years when we have kids in the, in the building.
So my comment, just to close it out, is we as a city can and must do better in this area, because what I consistently hear from young people is that they don't feel heard, and they don't feel reflected in the city's budget priorities. So I think all of us can do more to proactively seek out the voices of young people and incorporate them into these conversations in a real way. And by that, I don't just mean, what do you think about this, and show them a big spreadsheet, but really, and there are organizations, youth groups in this city that do this work, you all should partner with, really think through participatory budgeting for youth in a way that reflects their voices.
Okay. I've got a quick follow-up question for Bob, and then I know we've got questions from Councilman Henry, Councilwoman Middleton, Council President Scott. As a reminder, it's now 12:32 PM, this panel is scheduled to end at 1:00 PM. Bob, real quick, I should have asked this in the previous hearing, but it makes sense now based on the conversation. Can you talk about the results teams' recommendations? I know that none of these were adopted in fiscal year 2018, and, and what you're doing to make sure that, that more, if not all of these recommendations are adopted?
So that, you're referring, I think, to the performance measure in our, in our budget book. So we have, our practice has been that we have a group of city employees, most of them are mid-level managers or analysts in various departments, pull them together to help us evaluate budget proposals. We used to do that, going back three or four fiscal years, we did that for actually every proposal that came in. This year, the administration agreed to use a team to evaluate just the enhancement request to keep it a little bit more targeted. So we still do that. The idea of that, frankly, is that, you know, our role, you know, Finance's role is to look at things from a dollars and cents perspective, and you can see that we, in addition to that, do a lot of thought, put a lot of thought into what value or what results we get for the, for the dollars we spend. But having a, a group of employees that helps us, just helps to get a broader perspective on looking at those enhancement requests. So we, all those requests can be, be funded if we can find the funding for them. So typically, what we'll do is we'll allocate a certain amount of funding to pick the best, you know, few enhancements that will make their way into the budget, but all of those enhancements, if the administration, the mayor and her team get to see those, they hear actually directly from that team, they present directly to the mayor. If there's other ones that he or she or her staff wants to look more closely at, we go back and look at those. But again, sometimes it's a matter of funding availability, they can make those choices in the, in the process. So by, the performance measure we have means that everything that the team recommended was, made its way into the budget, and the reason it was a zero, that prior year was we did not use that process for that fiscal year. This year, every, the six items, I believe there were six enhancements that were recommended by the team to the administration are in the, in the budget this year.
All six of them?
Yeah, and the six were, they were on the slide from our overview hearing, just off of memory, there was a, one, two from planning, one was a food, a healthy food initiative, another was the asset management system to better track our capital assets. There was a DGS proposal to save money on HVAC to find preventive, to find issues with energy usage, which should lead to cost savings. There was a particular one about crime lab personnel for opioid-related cases, and I'm, I'm forgetting the other one, but there were six that were listed in that overview.
Okay, thank you.
There were thirty or thirty-five that were requested, so the team had to evaluate all those and figure out.
The team recommended six?
Those six, right.
Okay, thank you. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I actually, I want to begin by reminding my colleagues and also everyone in the audience that we have, sitting in committee right now, a charter amendment which would allow, if passed by the mayor and city, signed by, passed by the council, signed by the mayor, and ratified by the voters of Baltimore City, would allow the city council to have the power to add money during budget season to individual budget lines, as well as to cut from specific budget lines. I point that out to say that that might make it a little bit more effective for when we get to this point and agencies come before us and explain what they plan to do with the money that they've been allotted, but what they plan to do isn't what we, as much as we would like them to do, and it's not as much as the agencies would like to do, because this is all the money that they've been given, and we, the council, have no power to add to that. What I was going to recommend, Mr. Chairman, is that we might want to consider next year, before there would be an opportunity for the charter to be changed, we might want to consider having these budget hearings before the Board of Estimates votes on the version of the budget that comes to us.
We, we can't procedurally, we need, we, we can only entertain an ordinance that has been introduced to the city council, and it can't be introduced to the council until the Board of Estimates has approved it per the city charter.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, in terms of keeping to the existing way that we've been doing budget hearings. What I mean by that is that every year, the Board of Estimates also holds agency hearings, they just do it in a smaller room, and they don't invite anybody. And so...
Okay, hang on, folks.
And, and so this would be, I'm just sharing this with my colleagues, we might want to ask the administration if those agency hearings could be opened up for our participation, so that we could have this opportunity to have this level of dialogue with agencies at a point where we could then make our requests to the administration prior to them submitting a budget to us. Just throwing that out there, but...
No, I appreciate it, but why don't we, why don't we focus on wrapping up this panel? Because I'm very reluctant, we have fifty-five hours of hearings this week. We've, since I began chairing this committee in 2017, we started a new format. Fifty-five hours is a lot, and I'm very reluctant to make additional commitments on behalf of the committee without talking with the president and his staff.
Not, not asking for a commitment, Mr. Chairman?
Well, let's talk about it, let's talk...
I believe the phrase is, I'm throwing it out on the step, see if the cat looks it up.
Okay, it's out there on the step.
The question that I have is one that goes back to how the Department of Recreation and Parks and how the school system work together in dealing with our young people, and we're going to pull the Family League into it in a very specific way, in terms of how we feed kids. And Mr. Moore is familiar with the situation that we've had, I would say, at Walter P. Carter Recreation Center, except that thanks to the Twenty-First Century Schools Program, we no longer have a Walter P. Carter Recreation Center, we now have a Walter P. Carter Recreation Program taking place in the Guilford Elementary Middle School, because Walter P. Carter Recreation Center has been knocked down so that we can build a bigger Walter P. Carter School. But that's a conversation for a different hearing. Right now, we have a rec program trying to operate in Guilford Elementary Middle School, but the rec program, as I understand it, is required to use the school system as a vendor for providing food to kids. The school system is not always open at the same time that the rec centers are open. Sometimes, like, as we move to Saturday programming and during the summer, the school system doesn't necessarily have the, the staff there at the same time to provide food for the kids. Sometimes, especially for after-school, I'm sorry, out-of-school time programs, they will contract with the Family League to provide food for kids. What would be involved in getting rec and parks, the school system, and the Family League together, so that everyone just uses the Family League as one vendor that kids can get food from regardless of what program they're coming to a building for?
Councilman, who's that question directed to?
I, I assume it's directed to some combination of rec and parks, the school system, and the Family League.
Rec and parks, school system, Family League, does someone have an answer?
Yeah, I was about to say, so we would, we would love to have that dialogue and conversation to see what's, what's feasible and possible. We do work with Family League, and, and in times when schools are closed in inclement weather, they provide meals for us, and sometime they'll deliver those meals early. So we have been working with Family League on, on that opportunity, so I think it's just having a conversation to see how we can expand that opportunity.
So I'm going to take the, the nodding from Family League and the school system as a willingness to work with rec and parks and figure this out?
Yes.
Okay. How, can we put this on the list of things?
Sure.
To get, to check back in on?
Yep. Can you summarize it in one sentence?
In one sentence, I know. It could be a run-on sentence with lots of commas, right?
No, just, just like ten words or less, please.
How will rec and, ooh, ten words, they're long agency.
Councilman, we've got nineteen minutes left.
How will rec and parks, Family League, and the school system work together to feed kids with one vendor?
There you go. Outstanding. Jeff, do you, what request number is that, six?
Number six.
Thank you, sir. Excellent. Alice, do you have something to add?
Hi, Alice Kennedy, Deputy Commissioner for Department of Housing and Community Development. I'd like to add to that, that Housing and Community Development is one of the summer food sponsors. We have, we're actually the largest sponsor for the entire city with over three hundred sites. So it's a formulation of how the program, the summer, specifically summer food works across the city, and what's available with the state and USDA funding, so it would be something specifically for that.
I would be happy to amend my question to include HCD.
Alice, I love you, you have just somehow drafted yourself to be included in that response. Please include HCD.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed that, number one, I noticed that the Office of African-American Male Engagement would have been a nice addition on this panel, so I would offer, I would like to offer that they do, you make an appointment for them to come in. I know that they are doing some really good things in the city, and since it, it is a new office, that they should be, we should listen to what they have to say as well.
Absolutely. Jeff, we end at 4:30 on Thursday, can you please have Dr. Bunley in here at 4:30 to 5:00 PM?
Will do, thank you.
And then I also, and I agree with my colleagues about, you know, finding some way for youth to be involved, be involved in the budget and finance process, but it had me thinking, and it's probably going to date me and several others in here, but many, many years ago, you know, there was a course in the school system called Survival Skills, Home Economics, Independent Living, and they, the class covered topics such as budget and financing, and how to do that in the home, things like cooking, ironing, cleaning, personal hygiene, all those things are definitely part of preparation for, as you know, careers and jobs, and, you know, it helps our students to understand what, what it's meant to be a responsible teenager and young adult. I'd like to hear from some of the people on the panel, are you having, are there courses that you are presently doing in, on those, in those lines? I'd like to know, because if not, we definitely need to add those, that's all, all a part of job and career development. Who would like to begin?
So again, last year is a part of a partnership with the Department of Social Services, it was a program called Keys to Success, and this is mainly focused in terms of young people who are aging out of foster care, and really providing them with some of the key components and, and personal skills, really to assist them for independent living, and that is a curriculum that is established by the State Department of Human Resources that we'll be happy to share. That was a one-time pilot program that required federal Title IV waiver dollars, so once that program suspended, then there was no more really resources to continue with that project.
Oh, okay.
And Head Start, at the beginning of the year, we take a survey of all of our families, and when I say families, the majority of our parents are twenty-five and younger, so they're, they're, they could be termed youth, to find out what their interests are and what their needs are. And financial literacy is absolutely a top need and a top driver, and so monthly, we put on trainings, opportunities, group work, we have presenters come in at every single center around the specific topics that families want to hear, around those important things that you had mentioned.
The Pratt Library offers financial literacy programming for pretty much all ages in all of our branches across the system on an ongoing basis. Plus, in the next year, we're looking at ramping up a lot of our nutrition and sort of life skills programming. We have just had funding to purchase what's called a Charlie Cart, which is sort of like a mobile kitchen that we can use in our branches at many of our outreaches. We're really focusing also on digital training and digital equity, we're doing a program that will launch this month in laundromats to help customers while they're waiting, and we will be offering a lot of those programs throughout the summer geared at teens, as well as throughout the school year and after-school programming, but they're really usually for all ages as well.
School system, health?
We don't have programs specifically related to financial issues and, and sort of budgeting in your own home and that sort of thing, but in schools, through school health, we do train students to self-manage their, to self-manage their health, particularly students that self-carry their asthma inhalers with the doctor at patient principal input for students that are allowed to do that. Our Home Visiting Program, the Nurse-Family Partnerships, they work directly for first, with first teen mothers, to teach them a lot of those skills, including job connecting and managing life with a baby.
MOED, first of all, through Youth Works, young adults get access to financial education. We partner with Morgan State. We also offer a youth-friendly banking account, we don't, we offer, a partner comes in and offers a bank account, we're not running our own banks. But this year and last year, each year, a thousand young people open their first bank account as part of the Youth Works process, which I believe makes us the largest banking program for young adults. We also partner with the Cash Campaign to offer a money mentor program, where younger adults, but too old for Youth Works, are hired and trained to be money mentors, so they have to go through a formal training process, and then they go to Youth Work sites, and then they talk to young adults, younger adults, about money and credit, and, you know, they hear things differently from someone who's still in their age group, but just a little bit older. And then the last thing I'll mention, which sort of goes a little bit out of the youth arena, but we were awarded a very small planning grant to create a center for financial empowerment, and these will be most likely located at our one-stop centers, we're working with MOHS on that, and it's just a planning grant for now, so stay tuned, but we'll basically be making sure that as we're talking to young people and less young people about jobs, we're using that opportunity to also talk about money, and the best ways to think about their money, achieve their goals. Thank you.
Thank you. City Schools includes financial literacy beginning in the upper elementary grades in a variety of core content areas. In addition to that, there are opportunities that different schools take advantage of, such as stocks in the future, or junior achievement, where students can get additional enrichment time, going deeper into financial literacy-related topics. In addition to that, a number of our summer school programs include financial literacy-related topics, oftentimes through the guise of preparing for college, part of being ready for college is understanding your finances and what you need in order to... is understanding your finances and what you need in order to be able to get into college.
Thank you. And my colleague, Councilman Cohen, just as a footnote, or all of us, I'm beginning to notice that we, we need some kind of information bank with all of these different things where there's a one-stop shop that we can look at and, and the customers and our taxpayers can also see these ideas that are, because there's a lot of agencies are doing these wonderful things, but it's so all over the place. Right. So, just a footnote that we need some type of information bank or newsletter that have, that has all of these things together.
And my hope is, apologies, Mr. Chair, that the new Mayor's Office of Children and Families run by Ms. Edwards will provide exactly that resource because you're right, it is too siloed right now in terms of what's available to youth.
Right. Are there any sponsors that are, is it too late for sponsors to, that might be interested in Youth Works? Is that cut off?
It is not too late for those in the private sector to, to participate in Youth Works.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very mu, oh, Councilman Burnett, last question. My apologies.
Okay. I'll, I'll go quick, I know we're short on time. First, I would just reiterate the, for MOED, Mr. Perkins Cohen, my colleague, Councilmember Pinkett, the, the targets are one conversation. The other side of, I would, I would add is that if we can push the centers to do non-traditional outreach, for example, I invited one of your staff members to do a pop-up resource fair with me last Friday on Frederick Avenue, and he indicated that that was one of the most productive days he'd had in getting young people who were interested in employment or workforce training programs. And we were literally just standing on the corner on Frederick Avenue talking to anybody that would walk by with a sign that says, "Come here if you want some help." And he said, I, I want to say he had over thirty young people sign up right there on the spot and was going to be, you know, follow up with those folks and mentioned that that was one of the most productive things, more than VRI walks or anything else that they're doing because we know that we have to begin to, and this is for all the agencies, meet, literally meet people where they are, which is why I started doing the pop-up resource fair because I can't just say, "Come down to City Hall to find me." I got to come to you. And so, if we can, I think we can also increase that engagement by getting folks out of these centers and onto the street and meeting young people where they are in the middle of the day, especially if they're looking for employment. So, that was just more of a statement piece. The other thing was a, just, and we can talk offline, but I was disappointed with the output percentage of vulnerable young youth connected to community-based educational services at forty-five percent. That's, you know, of, we know that the nine-hundred actually engaged isn't, already represents a very small percentage of, of young people that need this service. And if less than half of those are being connected to educational-based services, that's not really going to move the needle even among the smaller cohort. Again, statement piece unless you have a response on how we're, we're trying to get that number up.
Can I just touch on them super quickly? First of all, I agree with you on the first point about meeting people where we are. We have a mobile, not only do we have a mobile workforce center, but more, well, equally important, we have a mobile team. So, you know, we put a schedule up, but we will adjust that schedule based on the council or other stakeholders who want us to be on a corner or in a community center, rec center, wherever we need to go, happy to do it. In terms of the other numbers you stated around education, you know, one of the things that we struggle with, quite honestly, is we are trying to respond to what the, whether, in this case, we're talking about young people, but any resident comes to us and wants. And what we are finding more and more is that folks who are coming to us don't want to focus on education right away, they need to focus on a job. And so, when that happens, you know, we talk about the importance of education, you can be certain of that, but if they, if they need a job tomorrow to keep the lights on, put food on their table, that's what we're going to do. But we, I share your sentiment.
My next two were for Enoch Pratt. It says that you're, you have a summer learning, summer challenge reading program, and in that, in the last reported actual, thirty-five percent of the participants completed that program. Can you talk about why there's such a small percentage of completion, where those programs are located, and what the plan is to improve that outcome?
Yeah, absolutely. So, our summer program is our summer learning program, and we recently changed the way we count the statistic a few years ago. We had traditionally always reported out the number that were just people signed up, and instead, we decided to focus on the people who completed the challenge fully. So, and then we moved the program to an online registration, and so there has been some growing pains around that, which we think has impacted the numbers. But still, we all have agreed internally that that's not a good output and that none of us are happy with that. So, we're looking at changes to the program pretty substantially next year. The program does take place in all twenty-two of our branches. People don't even need to really be in a branch to participate in the program. They can do it at home. They can do it from anywhere. We go into rec centers and other partners all summer long to provide programs. And we are focusing next year on moving more of our programs outside of our walls. We've become very, in the last couple of years, focused on what we can do to be out in the community as opposed to just in our branches, even though there's twenty-two of them. So, we will be looking at moving that out. We're also looking at changing our outcomes to reflect more of what we would consider sort of equity-based evaluation. So, we're really looking at target neighborhoods for completion and the goal being set by the family and the child as opposed to by the library. We would like to see higher numbers of completion in key areas of the city as opposed to just looking at the number across the board. We think that that shows more of an outcome as opposed to just sort of counting people. So, we, we agree with you that thirty-five percent is not outstanding and we look at changing that. I think some of it has been, just changes to the programs over the last few years have also taken a while for people to catch on to the differences in how we're doing the program, but we're actively looking at that.
Okay. And I look forward to next year, once you've sort of made those revisions. Summer reading loss is a huge issue for our young people when we had that gap. I happen to think we should have school year-round, but it's a different conversation.
Right.
So, if we can reach young people in the summertime and continue to have them engaged during that gap where they may not be able to, their parents may not be able to pay for them to have a, a reading coach or something like that, so that they're coming back into the school year. I mean, you know the importance of this.
Right, right. Yeah, we're very focused on the summer slide. And one of the things I would say, just in wrapping it up, is that that number also doesn't reflect the number of children that we're actively engaging with whose parents may not be recording their reading on the document and formally submitting it. There's still lots of children that are in programming in the library in the summer that just aren't captured in that thirty-five percent.
Okay. Well, whatever method you can use there.
We need to figure that out, too.
Yeah, to capture all of that, especially the library of all places. That's what stood out to me because I'm like, I used to do these programs as a kid myself.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, and I'll, I'll talk offline about the outcomes of extended library hours. I didn't get a lot of, I didn't see a lot of stats on it. I guess if you could speak in ten...
Yeah, just really quickly, I can say, we, we have expanded the hours across the board more than thirty percent. Most of those hours were focused on Pennsylvania Avenue location, our southeast anchor location, central location, but our hours have been even across the board. Our visits have increased, our circulation is up fifty-five percent, and our programming was up substantially. I don't have the exact number, but I'm happy to send you the full report that we just sent into the state. But across the board, we're seeing increase in usage, increase in visits, and increase in collection usage as well.
Okay. Can I make that a formal request, Mr. Chair, for the report?
Yes, we will send it to you.
Enoch, Enoch Pratt Library System sent the report to the state on the outcomes of extended library hours. Could we have that for the committee to review?
Yep. Jeff, so that's number seven?
Mr. Chair, I've got that as number eight. Added the budget hearing for the Office of African American Male Engagement.
Got it.
As number seven, so it should be eight.
Number eight, okay. And that's the report that Enoch Pratt Free Library gave to the state on outcomes?
Of extended library hours.
Outcomes of extended library hours. Got it.
Okay. And the last question I have, Mr. Chair.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. For, is a question for rec and parks and the school system. I received a correspondence from a constituent concerned that there's a lack of coordination between rec and parks and BCPS on facility improvements through the Twenty-First Century Program, School Construction Program. Essentially, the concern is that we're, the new building's being built, but there doesn't seem to be a corresponding strategy for rec center renovations of adjoining rec centers. Can you speak to any strategic planning that's going on between the agencies, if it's happening at all? What does that look like?
It's, it's happening now. We, we meet with the school system bi-weekly in the Walter P. Carter Plan. Our team worked closely with the school system, but predating Walter P. Carter, rec and park did have limited conversations with the school. So, I think if you look at the Fredericks, if you look at Fort Wordington, or you look at Dorothy Heights, it's designed for a school but not more so for recreational operations because the space is a little more spread out. But did a much better job in the design of the Walter P. Carter as well as Moore, Moore Crossman School. So, we are working now and they meet, like I said, there's bi-weekly meetings between our agency and the school system.
And is that, is there a corresponding ask in capital, in the capital budget in instances where there may be, I'll say, for example, in my district, you have Mary Rodman undergoing renovation. Thankfully, there was a separate effort to also do Mary Rodman rec center with renovations as well. Was that a part of a strategic plan or was that just coincidence that the things align and within the same construction timeline? Is that an intentionality moving forward that when we redo a school, we'll also look at recreational facilities?
When, when it's possible. And mostly Twenty-First Century, the rec center's been demoed. And so, what happens is that there's a commitment from a 2013 MOU that rec and park would be included in the community space. I know Councilman Herry spoke earlier about Walter P. Carter, and we've been exploring an option of, you know, do you look at a standalone rec center? But there, you know, I think it's a case by case, but we have not made that part of strategic plan of definitely building, replacing a standalone rec center because if we all know when the rec center's demo, before it's demo, it was an independent building. It comes back within, inside of the school. But at least now, like I said, our team is working closely with the school so that we can make the, the community space more rec user-friendly, I guess, what.
Yeah, I, I think that's a big issue. Accessing those community spaces requires permits and insurance and it's just a lot harder. And you're also talking about a loss of access from an hourly perspective. You're talking about expanding hours for rec centers. Well, if the rec center's gone, the school system doesn't have a corresponding, we're trying to stay open on Saturdays and late evenings plan as well. So, you end up with a net loss in activities for our young people even though we do have these beautiful buildings. So, I, I stopped there, Mr. Chair, I know we're over time, but I would like to continue that conversation.
Director, can you please make sure you follow up with Councilman Burnett and he gets what he needs? Thank you very much. We are now in recess. We'll be reconvening at one-thirty sharp.